...in women's health issues as well. Fifty years ago, contraception was listed under the criminal code and women could be fired for being pregnant. Because of research, sorry, because of research in the last 50 years, cancers like breast cancer have seen great advances in prognosis and treatment. And breast cancer research is continuing to receive money. In fact, 74 million in 2013 in Canada. So, we can hope for even more advances in the future. As much as we've progressed in 50 years, most women are shocked to learn the outcome for ovarian cancer has not changed a lot in 50 years. Ovarian cancer is the fifth most common cancer for women. The most fatal women's cancer, but only 13.8 million was spent on ovarian cancer research in Canada in 2013. Thirteen million dollars may sound like a lot of money, but compare the 74 million spent on research for breast cancer with the 13 million spent on ovarian cancer, and it's no surprise there have been great advances in breast cancer. But it's also no surprise the ovarian cancer funding shortfall has stalled progress to the extent that outcomes haven't improved much in five decades. If we don't change that soon, it will not be any better for the younger generation, and neither will it be for their children. And those children are your grandchildren and your great-grandchildren. If you're starting to worry that I'm here to ask you for money, I want to assure you, don't worry, I'm not. But if you're starting to wonder what you could do to change the course of ovarian cancer, I'm here to tell you, you can change the course because you can take the pamphlets that are being handed out and learn more about ovarian cancer. You can pass the pamphlets on to the women in your life, and they too can learn the symptoms of ovarian cancer. Women, you can know your bodies and know what is normal for you, and don't ever ignore any changes to your body. If you have changes, you can't resolve on your own in three weeks, but changes happen frequently, and they are symptoms of ovarian cancer. Take the symptoms seriously and go to your doctor. And keep going back to your doctor until the changes in your body are gone. Remember, when you leave your doctor's office, she will assume the symptoms are gone if you don't return. Knowledge is power. It was power for the grandmother of a young woman who attended one of our education sessions appropriately named "Knowledge is Power." When this grandmother heard about the signs and symptoms of ovarian cancer, she went home and told her granddaughter about what she learned. And with that information, the granddaughter went to the doctor and was diagnosed with ovarian cancer in the early stage, the stage that is easier to treat. In fact, the five-year survival rate for ovarian cancer is over 90% when detected in its early stages. But unfortunately, 80% of women diagnosed with ovarian cancer are diagnosed at an advanced stage where the five-year survival rate is only 30%. Knowledge probably saved the life of this young woman, and it could save your life or the life of the women you love. But you have to know the symptoms of ovarian cancer, and you have to take action. Please start that action today. Take the pamphlet for yourself and for the women you love. You should all have a copy of that in front of you. If you'd like, I'd like to leave you with the words of U.S. President Ronald Reagan. President Reagan was quoted as saying, "We can't help everyone, but everyone can help someone." Thank you for your time, and thank you for helping someone.
I have a proclamation. Whereas Zonta International's mandate is to advance the status of women through service and advocacy, and whereas the Zonta Club of Sioux State Marie area advocates for women's health through local service projects, in particular, the ovarian cancer awareness campaign, we ask the community to join us in learning about one of the most deadly cancers among women. Whereas Ovarian Cancer Canada strives to increase awareness of this disease, provide women care and support, and provide research funds to change the outcomes for those living with the disease. Now therefore, I, Christian Probst, Anamir, the city of Sioux State Marie, do hereby proclaim September 2017 as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to share the information about this overlooked and under-diagnosed cancer. Thank you for your time today and for your work for our community.
Thank you again, Mayor Probstano.
Under Agenda Item 5.2, Veteran Family Program. Tessa Claremont, Executive Director of Military Family Resource Center, National Program Manager, Veteran Family Program. Tina Thomason, Veteran Family Program Coordinator, and Scott Clark, Honorary Colonel Emeritus, 22 Wing North Bay, are in attendance.
Welcome to council.
Thank you. Thank you, members of council, staff, and members of the public. Thank you, your worship, for your enthusiastic support for our awareness efforts to reach veterans and their families in Sioux State Marie. We're here to engage you and ask for your support to raise awareness of how the Veteran Family Program can assist members and their families as they transition from military to civilian life. Our Veteran Family Program began as a pilot in one of seven locations across Canada. In 2018, it will expand to all 32 Military Family Resource Center locations across Canada. It was developed because it became known that some veterans and their families can experience numerous challenges as they leave the military and integrate to their civilian communities, especially when their release is due to an illness or an injury. The Veteran Family Program is there to support and assist families with their transition to being a veteran family. There are veterans and families who have settled, live, and work in Sioux State Marie. We're unable to identify them or to reach out to them to provide support if it's needed, or to learn from them what they need from their community to ensure a smooth transition. It's estimated that approximately 1,356 members release every year across Canada. That includes, sorry, in addition, there's 700 military spouses and 900 children who are impacted by their release. In Sioux State Marie alone, it's estimated that numbers from the reserve units are 243 active members and 112 recently released members. This does not include people who served in locations across Canada and return home following their release from the military. Our challenge is that this is a large geographical area to cover. Our catchment area is in the shaded part of the map there. We don't know when someone has released from another base and may be settling into our catchment area or in Sioux State Marie until issues arise or crises occurs. We want to help veterans and their families access the support that's available to them in Sioux State Marie, as well as the national services that are tailored to veteran families. I'll pass it over to Honorary Colonel Scott Clark to tell you about our awareness efforts.
Thanks, Tina. Is there any veterans or veteran family members here serving on council? Is there?
We have a veteran behind us here.
What's that?
We have a veteran with us right here.
Nice. We have a veteran right here. Thank you for your service, sir.
And thank you for the veteran families as well, because they serve along with our veterans. And as Tina mentioned, there's hundreds in this area, and a very proud 49th Regiment that has served proudly and continues to serve proudly in this area. Our media campaign will be rolling out, and today's the first day. Sioux State Marie is rolling it out across Northern Ontario, and this is our kickoff. So I want to thank Jeff Alge from Sioux Today. I want to thank Scott Sexsmith from Rogers Radio, CTV, Shaw, all our media partners that have jumped on board to support this initiative. We are reaching out to the community, making people aware, making people aware that there's veteran families, veterans that are in need of support. And that's why Tina and Tessa are here today, to provide that, reaching out to the stakeholders across the area. That means to our businesses that provide tremendous supports, to reaching out to the different, different members within their organization that are veterans and veteran families. All right, slide. So in, as part of our reach out, we have, we have stickers and t-shirts that proudly represent if you're a veteran family or you proudly support veteran families. And of course, a great deal of information as well. We want people to be aware that there are veterans serving and veteran families serving among us, and we want to find out what staff members and who are among us that are serving, and we want to provide reach out as well. There are people that are serving and supporting veteran families around this area, and I'd like to hand it over to Tessa that's going to demonstrate that right now.
So, it's my pleasure tonight to recognize a member of your Sioux State Marie community, May Adshead. I'd like you to join me. So, May has been supporting military families and veteran families in your community for about a decade, and she started this initiative when her son, who was with the 49th Artillery Regiment at the time, was deploying to Afghanistan for what would be the first of a couple deployments to Afghanistan. Her son is now a regular force military member in Canada, and as you know, May's husband, Ed, is a veteran. Her father served in World War II. She's just the epitome of a veteran family member, and the work that she has done in Sioux State Marie is incredible, something that I wanted to recognize. She's a true testament to the commitment to veteran and military families, that's so important to the military for them to do what they do. I know that in 2007, she started in this community, working on the Red Friday Golf Fun Day, which just celebrated. It's the 10th anniversary this summer, which is truly incredible to set something up like that. Those funds help them, help your families and your community. So, to recognize May today, it's my honor to present her with the Spirit of the Military Family Coin. What's really unique about this coin is it cannot come from the military. They have so many traditions, so many awards, but this is something that comes from military families. We are Military Family Resource Center that's governed by families for families, and the gift of a coin symbolizes your achievements, and it is given to you with respect and acknowledgement of your significant contribution to the spirit of the military family, the strength behind the uniform. It's my pleasure to present this coin to you today, May. So I want to thank you for having us and ask the floor if there's any questions before we conclude our presentation.
Do we have any questions of the presenters? Well, we thank you for, for your good work on behalf of, of military families, and it's been a pleasure getting to know you and working with you. I have a proclamation here to read on behalf of the city. May, thank you very much for all of your service and frankly, for representing the city of Sioux State Marie so well. You certainly make us proud. Thank you. Whereas the transition from military to civilian life following the release from the Canadian Armed Forces to veteran status can pose challenges for veterans and their families. And whereas the family is widely recognized as the strength behind the uniform, the family often bears the brunt of navigating, connecting, supporting, and learning about civilian life, often at the expense of their own well-being. Whereas the inclusion of veteran families into the social fabric of our community is fundamentally the right thing to do for our veterans' families. And whereas it is vital to continue working together to ensure that no veteran family is left to walk the journey of civilian life alone. Now therefore, I, Christian Probst, Anamir, the city of Sioux State Marie, do hereby proclaim the week of September 11th to 15th, 2017, as Veteran Family Week in Sioux State Marie, to promote awareness of the important role veteran families have, the value they bring to our community, and encourage the community to learn about, connect with, and express gratitude for our veteran families here in Sioux State Marie. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item 5.3, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Dana Caruso, Executive Director of Northern Ontario Families of Children with Cancer is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Ms. Caruso.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mayor and council, for having me here again today, and thank you for all of you who attended our flag raising at 3:30 outside. It seems every year that we have more and more councillors in attendance, so thank you very much for taking those few moments to stand with us. My name, as Mayor said, is Dana Caruso, and I'm the Executive Director at Northern Ontario Families of Children with Cancer. We support families all over the north with their immediate financial and emotional needs, because unfortunately for families in our geographical region who have children diagnosed with cancer, they are forced to travel for treatments to areas like Ottawa, Toronto, London, Hamilton, and some to the states and beyond for their treatment. This causes a lot of overwhelming expenses for families out of pocket. So NOFCC tries to reduce that burden that many face by allowing those parents to concentrate on the well-being of their child without having to worry about the financial costs that are involved. We funded a multitude of programs, and I do invite you to visit nofcc.ca to learn more about how we help families right here in your community. It is estimated that one-third of a family's after-tax income is spent after diagnosis on out-of-pocket treatment-related expenses. The reality for most families is that as costs are increasing, income is decreasing, and cancer is the focus of the family. The Canadian Cancer Action Network estimates that families of children with cancer incur an average of more than $28,000 in costs in the first three months of treatment. Children live the life of dreamers, but in a heartbeat, all of that can change. Every two minutes, a parent around the world hears the words, "Your child has cancer." These four words, they change everything. Parents' time is torn between hospital, home, and work. Brothers and sisters feel left out and left behind, and the child with cancer misses out on school and being with their friends. Treatment takes over their life. The child is poked, prodded, and exposed to harmful treatments. They lose their hair, their eyelashes, their eyebrows, limbs are removed, and organs are cut out. Their path to survival is actually a very dangerous road, and sometimes, unfortunately, cancer does get the last word. This community knows that all too well. One in five kids in the U.S. and Canada will not survive a cancer diagnosis, but for those that do, the battle is still not over, because two out of three survivors will suffer from long-term effects from their treatment, like learning disabilities, hearing loss, heart disease, infertility, and secondary cancers. There are researchers around the world with brilliant ideas that they want to bring to light. Treatments that will forever change childhood cancer. Smart medicines that target only the cancer and don't poison the rest of the body. Personalized treatments for each child's unique genetic makeup, not a one-size-fits-all approach that we use today. Early detection and prevention techniques are available, we know this, but in order to find them, we have to fund research. And this can be done through groups such as the St. Baldry's Foundation, who do research into childhood cancer specifically and solely. No one who hasn't heard the words that "your child has cancer" can ever understand how that feels, myself included. I am not a parent of a child with cancer. And hopefully, those of you here today that haven't heard those words never will. You'll never have a feeling of being desperate for a cure or a better treatment option that won't cause your child to go blind or cause a secondary cancer. And unfortunately for the parents that are joined here with me today, that is a reality. These people are your neighbors, your friends, your community. To ever think that this problem is small, irrelevant to your own life, or that it's not that bad, I do invite you to go look at the research for yourself. I'm here to continue discussion that I started in this very room four years ago, and my goal is just to raise awareness every year. So if I've reached one more person, I've reached my goal. I've added two more cities to my list of places that I'm visiting, and it now brings me to 12. So before I started this job, I was under the impression that kids diagnosed with cancer were treated, and they lost their hair, but that they were cured and that they lived long, happy lives. It's really, it's a nice story that we sell to the masses, but it's not the truth. Lots of childhood cancer information is sugar-coated to make it look easy, and I want you all to know that one in 285 children are diagnosed before their 20th birthday, and that is not rare by any means. If you visit the CCS website, it will tell you that childhood cancer is rare. Sadly, more Northern Ontario children develop cancer anywhere else in the province. The Ontario average is 150 cases per million, whereas in the Northeast, it's 175 cases per million. Childhood cancer is considered rare, although in Canada, one in 285 is diagnosed before their 20th birthday, and one in five succumb to this disease. There are currently 10,000 children living with cancer in Canada, and around the world, 300,000 children are diagnosed every year, and every day, or sorry, every two minutes, another child is diagnosed around the world, and every day, 250 children die of this disease. More children die of childhood cancer than any other disease, more than AIDS, asthma, cystic fibrosis, congenital abnormalities, and diabetes combined. The incidence of childhood cancer has increased 29% in the last 20 years, and the reasons for that are still largely unknown. Major cancer organizations claim to fund research, provide anywhere from 3% to 5% of their funding to fund all childhood cancers, and the Ministry of Health only provides 3% of all their cancer research dollars to pediatric cancer. As things stand today, the National Cancer Institute still continues to only provide 4% of their research dollars to fund all 12 types of childhood cancer and all 200 subtypes. It's just not enough. There is never, that, there is no way that that will ever be enough for our kids. So we need to try and influence some change, because we want better. In 45 years, only three drugs have been developed specifically for the use in children with cancer, and most importantly, for many of the childhood cancers that we have, the same treatments that existed in the 1970s continue to be used today, unaltered. This heartbreaking disease continues to scar families and communities that may never fully heal. In a little over two years' time, our Northern Ontario community has lost nine children. This month, we remember Sarah, Angela, Taton, Anthony, Quentin, Karim, Eric, Jasme, and Kyle, and all the other young lives that have been taken too soon in our communities over the years. I have brought gold awareness ribbons with me today, and I have left one on each of your desks this afternoon, with the hope that you will take it and that you will wear it proudly throughout the month of September. And if you take just one statistic that I've given you today and you pass that message on, then you are doing your part to raise awareness. So in conclusion, I'd like to thank the city of Sioux State Marie again for listening for our call for action and allowing us the opportunity to speak here today and let our cause be heard. Let this city shine gold to honor our children and the battle that each one of them has fought. Thank you.
Thank you. Whereas there are about 4,000 children living with cancer in Ontario, and each year, about 400 new cases are diagnosed. Whereas the causes of cancer in children is largely unknown. And whereas in Canada, childhood cancer remains responsible for more deaths from one year through adolescence than any other disease, killing one in five children affected by the disease. And whereas an estimated one-third of a family's after-tax income is spent on treatment-related expenses due to lack of available treatment options for the inhabitants of Northern Ontario. Whereas the city of Sioux State Marie recognizes the devastating effects of childhood cancer in the residents of the city of Sioux State Marie. And this month, we pay tribute to the healthcare professionals, researchers, private philanthropies, parent advocacy groups, who collaborate to provide hope and help to patients and families affected by pediatric cancer, while making vital contributions to the ongoing search for cures. Now therefore, I, Christian Probst, Anamir, the city of Sioux State Marie, do hereby proclaim September 2017 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Sioux State Marie, and encourage residents to show their support of this cause by increasing awareness, speaking up about childhood cancer, wearing the color gold, and reaffirming our commitment to fighting childhood cancer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 5.4, Pride Fest. Galen Coleman's in attendance.
Welcome to council. You're welcome. Floor is yours.
Am I reading the proclamation?
No, I read the proclamation. Those are mine.
That's what I thought.
Oh, did you have a presentation you wanted to make, or did you want to say anything, or you just want me to read the proclamation?
Well, I was going to read after you read the proclamation.
Oh, so we're doing it backwards. Okay.
Leave it up to us. We always do it backwards. Leave it up to me to do it backwards.
If you'd like me to go first, I will read the proclamation. So, I have a proclamation here. Whereas queer and trans people are vital and valued members of our community, and whereas we recognize the importance of inclusive opportunities, a more visible queer community and the freedom to express oneself without prejudice. And whereas diversity, acceptance, understanding, and inclusion are core values that we seek to obtain, uphold, and promote. And whereas the importance of creating safer spaces, developing allies, and eliminating homophobia, transphobia, and biphobia cannot be understated. And whereas we seek to ensure the well-being of all queer and trans people, their families, and their friends in our community. Now therefore, I, Christian Probst, Anamir, of the city of Sioux State Marie, do hereby proclaim September 16th to September 23rd, 2017, as Pride Fest in the city of Sioux State Marie, and I encourage all citizens of all orientations and identities to join together in this celebration. You have the floor now.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor Probstano, and esteemed council members. We, as the LGBTQ plus community, are excited to say that we are holding our fourth annual Pride Festival. It has been a long, hard struggle, struggle, pardon me, for the LGBTQ plus community. I am a proud member myself of the family, and felt I took a chance coming out, as I am also a small business owner, but the support has been overwhelming. We do have to admit, though, that some still and always will struggle, but having a strong city and community and council and mayor as yourselves, the struggle gets easier day by day, and we will get through. So again, thank you for the continuous support, and to my LGBTQ, God, that's a mouthful, plus family, happy pride, and let the festivities begin.
That's great.
Thank you.
Before you step away, if anybody's interested in participating in any of the festivities, is there a website we can direct them to, or is there anywhere they can go for that information about when the activities are occurring?
On the Facebook, there is a Sioux Pride, and it's posted through all various friends as well. Sioux Pride Community is the name of the Facebook page.
Okay.
If you go on that, all the events are posted. All the events are starting.
Very good. So we can direct people to Facebook and Sioux Pride Community if they're interested in seeing where the events are.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Agenda Item 5.5, Algoma Fall Festival. Donna Hilsinger, Executive Director of the Algoma Fall Festival, is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Ms. Hilsinger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon. On the 45th anniversary of the Algoma Fall Festival in Sioux State Marie, Ontario, it is my pleasure to be here today to tell you a little bit about what's happening. It's also the occasion of Canada's 150th birthday, and I certainly would like to take a moment to thank the city of Sioux State Marie for their very kind support of what we do at the Algoma Fall Festival. It's extremely important, and I look forward to working with others in a new spirit of what enhanced arts and culture can bring to our community, both for our local residents and for people who can come here from away to, to, to get a flavor of what Sioux State Marie is all about. This year, two exhibitions at the Art Gallery of Algoma, along with 11 different events over the month of October. We're very proud to bring Roberta Bondar's exhibition, Light in the Land, which celebrates Ontario 150, with a photographic exhibition to honor the 25th anniversary of her historic flight into space. It's very exciting. Her photography is beautiful and glorious. We're really excited to be hosting that exhibition here in partnership with the Roberta Bondar Foundation and the Art Gallery of Algoma. As well at the Art Gallery, there'll be an exhibition of their permanent collection of the Group of Seven, along with some of their contemporaries, like Emily Carr and Jack Bush. 11 other events, starting off with Sylvia Tyson, Jonathan Rois, Madeleine Tien, Robin Duke, Serena Ryder, whose tickets are selling crazy. I see people of all ages and musical interests so excited to have her in Sioux State Marie. Soul Pepper Theatre, we have a unique partnership with Soul Pepper, one of the, one of the most extraordinary theater companies in the whole country of Canada. They'll be bringing their show Riverboat Coffee House, the Yorkville Scene, which is songs and stories from the Riverboat Coffee House, and perhaps some of you may have been there in Yorkville in the 60s. With their, the Owls, not Owls, Steve, yeah, perfect, perfect. And those are the songs of people like Ian and Sylvia, Neil Young, Gord Lightfoot, Joni Mitchell, and many others. Fabulous show, and we'll also have a discussion with Soul Pepper about the role art has in truth and reconciliation. The final weekend of this, of the festival is our Celtic Festival. You can come and learn to step in square dance. Frank Fatah, I hope to see you there. Along with some wonderful Cape Breton musicians, Colin Grant, Scott McMillan, Mary Rankin, and Wendy Mackaisik, and there would be some names there that you would recognize. Our festival, also Jonathan, along with Mary and Wendy and Robin Duke, will be doing performances and workshops in our schools across the District of Algoma. Over 8,000 students get to learn about Celtic music, get to have a comedy improvisational workshop, and many other things. It's very, it's very exciting, and to see how art and music can change kids' lives. It's a very important part of what we do. New, I'm very excited to tell you that through the Algoma Fall Festival and tourism in Sioux State Marie, the restaurant community in Sioux State Marie has come together with something called Savor the Season. Seven restaurants in Sioux State Marie, from October 2nd to October the 29th, will be offering pulse fix menus, featuring whatever it is that they actually want to feature. And that's very exciting. It's the first time, first time I think that something like this has ever hap, has ever happened, and so it's exciting to bring that as part of, of the festival and give things for the, again, for our local community to do, and also for, for, we work very hard to bring resident, or bring people in from outside of Sioux State Marie, because that has tremendous economic value in terms of... Ste. Marie, because that has tremendous economic value in terms of arts and culture, and we will see many visitors come from outside of our city. Our festival is very generously presented by Sault Today and Village Media, and supported by CTV, Porter Airlines, Rogers Radio, Lucidia, and the Water Tower Inn. I hope to see all of you out at as many shows as you can come out and participate in. Thanks.
So before you go, I know there’s a whole group of people that do this with you, Donna, but it’s a tremendous amount of work. So on behalf of the community, thank you to you and everybody else who puts this festival on. It’s fantastic. My wife is watching. I don’t know why, but she watches all the council meetings, so I’m sure I’ll be going on a date night for one of these Savor the Season events.
Absolutely, and well, you should.
So thank you for your work, and thank you for the festival. I’m sure it’ll be fantastic. We have council members.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Donna. Great job. The one thing that I wanted to draw attention to, and if you won’t even talk for a second, is becoming a member through the membership programs there are. I don’t know if – is this just rolling automatically, Frank? Okay, so we can’t go to the membership, or can we click on that, Donna? Because you’ve got the different levels of membership, from being a patron, benefactor, and so on and so forth, and these are packages I’d really encourage people to go on and check out. I’m now a patron.
Yay!
She’s strong-armed me. Because you get $5 off your tickets – I’ve just got Scottish blood in me – and you get $100 credit to go to these four restaurants during the festival season. So, I mean, for example, a patron is, I think, $99, if I remember, you know, $99?
Yes.
And yet, you get $100 worth of certificates, plus $5 off tickets. So I’ve already bought my Sylvia Tyson, and I’m not old enough for the coffee shop at Yorkville, but I’m maybe going to do it anyway, coffee houses. So I just really encourage people to become members, because that’s a very great way of supporting, and yet it’s a great value for you. So thanks for what you do, Donna.
Thank you.
Thank you. So council, I think we’re going in with your forbearance. We’re just going to skip 5.6, because that’s me reading an awful lot of names, and we’re going to go to 5.7, which is Legion Week, and while we have a delegation here, we’ll go right to that one.
Wilma Oliver, President of the Royal Canadian Legion Branch 25, is in attendance.
Welcome to council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to raise awareness of the Royal Canadian Legion across our region. Ontario Command has designated a full week specifically for the promotion of the good work of our branches and our ladies’ auxiliary. Most Canadians are familiar with the support and assistance provided to our veterans by our branches and their dependents since its inception in 1926, yet many don’t know about our organisation beyond the Poppy Campaign and Remembrance Day. This designated week is a chance to demonstrate who we are and to let all Canadians know we are proud legionnaires and why. Therefore, on behalf of the Royal Canadian Legion, Branch 25, here in the Sault, I invite you, Mayor Provazano, to proclaim the week of September 17th to the 23rd as Legion Week.
And I will do just that.
Thank you.
Whereas the Ontario Provincial Command of the Royal Canadian Legion represents nine districts, which include over 400 branches, within these branches, we have over 100,000 members, and whereas the Royal Canadian Legion is a non-profit organisation, assuming the responsibility maintaining the tradition of remembrance of those who paid the supreme sacrifice by defending our great nation in past and present conflicts, so that we, as Canadians, can live in the freedom that we enjoy today. And whereas the Royal Canadian Legion continues to support and represent our veterans of past and present, with many benefits as a result of the determination of our thousands of dedicated members at all levels of the organisation, and whereas legion branches across the province work together with their affiliated organisation, the Ladies Auxiliary, to raise funds in support of the many programmes within Ontario Command of the Royal Canadian Legion, and whereas with millions of dollars being raised from branch and ladies auxiliary projects, the Legion supports numerous programmes benefiting our veterans, seniors, and youth within our communities. Now therefore, I, Christian Provanzano, Mayor of the City of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim September 17th to September 23rd, 2017, as Legion Week within Ontario Command of the Royal Legion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item 5.6 is city beautification winners, and the mayor is going to announce who the winners of the city beautification awards are.
So I guess the group that’s responsible for this, we’re doing it a bit differently this year, and we’re not presenting the awards at council. We’re just recognising the people who won the awards, and we’re having a reception at City Hall whereby they’ll attend and we’ll recognise them there. Just going to give them a second here to put up the slideshow. The slideshow’s not going to follow the order that I’m speaking in, but if you keep your eyes on the screen, you can see some of the winners, and I will just go through the parties that did win the city beautification awards this year. In Ward 1, for the front yard award, we had the Jones Residence on Queen Street, the McDonald Residence on Country Club, and the Vit Residence on Centennial. Ward 1 backyard, we had the Mount Residence on Gibb Street, the Jones Residence on Queen Street, and the Mackin Residence on Oregon Road. So Ward 2, front yard, we had the Parneac Residence on Queen Street. It’s quite a garden in front of that house, eh? That’s tremendous. The Mancusa Residence on Ravina, and the Fremland Residence on Pine Street. Backyard in Ward 2, we had the Miller Residence on Parkdale, the Wilding Residence on Wellington, and the La Marsh Residence on McCray Street. On the Ward 3 front yard, we had the Leeson Residence on Malabar, the Hollingsworth-Boutin Residence on Village Court, and the Kinnahan Residence on Park Place Drive. Ward 3 backyard, we had the Longo Residence on Mill Creek, the Kinnahan Residence on Park Place, and the Keane Residence on Terrence Drive. Ward 4 front yard, we had the Breckenridge Residence on Spruce Street, the Gallo Residence on Anita Boulevard, and the La Souk Booth Residence on White Oak Drive. Ward 4 backyard, we had the Breckenridge Residence on Spruce Street, the La Souk Booth Residence on White Oak Drive, and the Bice Residence on Charles. Ward 5 front yard, we had the Chalatty Residence on Raymond, the St. Amour Residence on Fourth Line, and the Joyce Residence at Millennium Court. Ward 5 backyard, we had the Midill Residence on Bluer, the Joyce Residence on Millennium Court, and the Chalatty Residence on Raymond Street. Ward 6 front yard, we had the Bisucci Residence on Anderson Road, the Edwards Residence at Sunnyside Beach Road, and the Fabro Residence on Admiral Drive. Ward 6 backyard, we had the Pennis Residence on Spadina, the Edwards Residence on Sunnyside Beach, and the Weber Residence on Cooper Street. The Commercial Institutional, the sponsor of that award was KPMG, we have the McDonald’s on Trunk Road, Precious Blood Cathedral, and the Algoma Condo Corp. Number 3 at 570 McDonald’s Avenue. We have the Best Feature Garden, the sponsor of this award is Lemieux Composting. We had the Laney Residence on McFadden, the Birmaster Residence on Lake, and the La Marsh Residence on McCray. Most Improved Property, the sponsor of this award is New North Greenhouses. We had the Campudo Residence on Westridge, the Rose Residence on Superior, and the Mackin Residence on Oregon. Best Water Feature, sponsor is the New North Greenhouse. We have the Landry Residence on Kohler Street, the Brain Residence on Thornhill Crescent, and the Midill Residence on Bluer Street West. And the Green Glove Garden Award, the sponsor for that is Clean North. We had the Miller Residence on Parkdale, the Weber Residence on Cooper, and the Mackin Residence on Oregon. So the Best Vegetable Garden, sponsor of this award is the Sault Ste. Marie Horticultural Society. We had the Miller Residence on Parkdale, Bisucci Residence on Anderson Road, Pennis Residence on Spadina Avenue. And the Best of the Best, the sponsor is Downing’s Landscape and Greenhouse. We had the Pold Residence at Sunnyside Beach Road. An awards presentation for the winners will take place on September 19th. The rest runs the room. I get to give it an award for this, and I usually do it on the committee’s recommendation, but this year, they had recommended that I visit a few places, and I actually did. And the mayor’s award is going to the Food Bank Farm. And I want to take a minute just to talk about this, because it’s quite tremendous, and I want to really recognise the folks that are behind it. So we have Colin Templeton and Isabel Trache-Sossier, who operate this farm, Odomack Road, and they do this to produce food for the most needy in our community, and all of the produce from this farm is going to the soup kitchen and to other families in need. And their goal was to produce 75 to 100 hampers of food a week over a 15-week period, packaging and distributing 1,200 to 1,500 hampers of food to people in our community that need that food. They are a non-for-profit vegetable farm. They are doing this on their own time, at their own expense, and they are doing it entirely for the betterment of our community. And there was a funny picture of me on social media last week, cutting a squash. They had asked me to do that, because they wanted to put it on their Facebook page, but I was really taken aback by their civic mindedness and the scale of what they’re doing, and I want just to just let the people that can know that if you want to support this, you can go to their website. It’s Food Bank Farm, and you can go to their website, and there are different ways that you can contribute and support them as they make food, real good food, for the people in our community that need it. So they are the winners of the mayor’s award, and I just wanted to take that moment to acknowledge and recognise their contribution to our community, and thank the rest of the beautifications. Okay, so that, we have another set of delegations on our delegations list, but we’re not going to go to the delegations on Pine Shore – is it Red Pine? I should know this. I spent enough of my weekend talking about it. So we’re not going to take the delegations from Red Pine Drive. What we’re going to do is we’re going to deal with a motion that is on your addendum. So we’re going to deal with the motion first on your addendum. You’ll be able to ask questions of staff. We’re going to vote on that motion. If that motion passes, then I don’t think we’ll have to take any delegations from Red Pine Drive, but I want to let all the people here know that all the material you’ve provided is on the agenda, and council has it. So those positions are in council’s receipt of them. So we’re going to pull up 6.12 off the consent agenda, so we’re going to pull 6.12 off the consent agenda. We’re going to deal with 6.12 first, but we’re not going to deal with the motion in the report. We’re going to deal with the motion that is on your addendum. And let me just kind of maybe take a minute and talk about how that came to pass. So there was some discussion this weekend that I had with councillors and some different people that are involved in this at the city and also with the syndicate, and there was an understanding that this was supposed to be in front of the council on August 21st. There was some confusion as to why it wasn’t. So I just want to make clear that it was intended to be on council on August 21st, and staff did have a report ready for agenda review to be on council on August 21st, but when agenda reviewer received the report, namely me specifically, I had a lot of questions about it, and I didn’t think that the report was in a place to answer all the questions that council might have. So I suggested to staff that they had to provide a more fulsome report to council, and it was pulled from that August 21st agenda. So that’s the only reason why it didn’t show up on August 21st, is that it’s a matter that’s taken place over 10 years, and not having been here in 2007 when it started, I certainly had a lot of questions about it, and I thought council would, so it was sent back to staff to produce a more fulsome report, so it’s here today. As a result of it being published, the report and recommendation being published last week, as you’re all aware, I had a number of communications and conversations with some of you. I also had a number of conversations with senior city staff, and there was a specific member of the syndicate who reached out to me a number of times, and I spoke to – I felt like the syndicate threw that person, but I got a better sense of what the syndicate’s positions were. So to address things that I was hearing from city council, and hearing from city staff, and hearing from the syndicate, I drafted a resolution for this agenda, and councillor Shoemaker had called me about this matter, and he had asked me what was going on with it, and I told him I had drafted a resolution, and he happily took the resolution, because he doesn’t have a resolution on today’s agenda. So he’s got that resolution, so we put the resolution on the agenda. I can say that staff had indicated to me in the meeting earlier today that staff was supportive of the resolution as I drafted it, that appears on the agenda. So that’s the resolution that we’re dealing from. So we’re not dealing from the resolution in the report. We’re going to table that resolution, and we’re just going to deal with the resolution that you have on your addendum. Noting that, are we all kind of clear where we’re at? So councillor Hollingsworth is indicating that you don’t have that?
I have the full script.
Okay, so you have to – one second councillor Turkle, you might have to reboot your escribe, but I understood that staff was going to have the addendums printed off in paper for you. You have that. So councillor Turkle is saying he has that. Well, listen, we’ll have the clerk’s office work that out. I’m getting the impression that some of you have the motion. Councillor – so whoever doesn’t have it, staff will get it to you. Okay, so are we clear on where we’re at then, and the motion that’s in front of us? Councillor Nero?
Just to that, Mr. Mayor, for clarification, why are we tabling the existing resolution? Why do we not defeat that and look to see what we’re doing with this resolution?
Because if this resolution passes, it will supersede the existing resolution.
And that one will be officially read and not dealt with?
Yeah.
Okay. I just thought procedurally, we should be defeating that other resolution.
We don’t have to defeat it. No, if this passes, that one will just be read and not dealt with.
Thank you.
Okay, so we’ll have the clerk read the motion that’s before you, and then we’ll go to open up questions for staff. Sound good? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Okay, this is Agenda item 6.12, land transfers between the city and Pointe de Par Syndicate, Red Pine Drive. It’s a motion moved by councillor Shoemaker, whereas notwithstanding that Red Pine Drive did not meet a minimum municipal standard, city council directed staff to accept the deed to Red Pine Drive by way of resolution dated August 27, 2007, and whereas it has taken staff and the Red Pine Drive Syndicate 10 years to make the necessary arrangements for the city to accept a transfer of Red Pine Drive, now therefore be it resolved that city staff is hereby authorised by city council to accept the transfer of Red Pine Drive in accord with the resolution dated August 27, 2007, and further authorised to undertake the work outlined as Schedule C in the report of the Solicitor Prosecutor dated September 11, 2017, to complete the hammerhead turnaround at the end of Red Pine Drive. Further, staff is directed to develop a road assumption policy for council’s review and approval that outlines the city’s requirements for a private road assumption, which policy will be applied to any future request of the city to assume a private road.
Councillor Quimby, did you want a second to that?
Yeah.
Okay, so councillor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the Deputy CAO of Public Works. Mr. Girardi, the resolution talks about undertaking the work outlined in Schedule C to complete the hammerhead turnaround at the end of Red Pine Drive. Is that something that you could do with our public work forces?
Through Mr. Mayor to councillor Shoemaker, yes, we’ll undertake that work.
And how quickly could it be done?
Well, this type of work will do during our shoulder period, which is coming up in October, November, as long as the snow doesn’t set in fairly quick, but it shouldn’t take us very long. I’m figuring within a couple of weeks, we would have it completed.
Do you know, I guess approximately, what this might cost?
Well, we’re going to – fortunately, this was a year that we have millings from surface treatment programme, so we’re going to take the millings, and we’ll be using that, so material costs will be limited to probably no more than $10,000, $15,000. Labour costs, of course, will be handled through Public Works under our existing operating budgets.
Okay, and thank you, Deputy CAO Girardi. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city solicitor. Madam City Solicitor, if the resolution is accepted as is, does that satisfy much of the concern of legal with the assumption of the road? Perhaps not all of it, but does it satisfy much of it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker, yes, it does.
Now, I know that another concern in the main report was on the width of the road. Is there, either through to the city solicitor or in conjunction with the Deputy CAO of Public Works, is there anything that can be done on a relatively quick basis or simple basis to relieve those – they’re called pinching points in the report?
Through Mr. Mayor to councillor Shoemaker, certainly with doing the hammerhead at the end of the road for the turnaround, we’re going to also include doing the pinch points. I’m going to do what it takes to keep our fire chief happy and to make sure his equipment can get in and out of there.
Okay, and so with that information, back to the city solicitor, do those two items, the turnaround and the widening by alleviating the pinch points, does that really capture most of what legal’s concern is?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker, and the tailpiece of that was that it wouldn’t happen again, the precedent setting aspect, and that’s covered off through the requirement of a policy which all agree with.
requirement of a policy which all, all agree with the law to, to draft something.
Okay, so, sounds like you're fairly happy.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm content.
At this point, Counsel Shoemaker, we're not going for happiness anymore. We're long past that.
I'm, I'm satisfied that, that this basically covers off all the concerns I had.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Shoemaker. Counselor Bruny?
I have one quick question to Deputy CAO Girardi. What's the difference between the hammerhead and the turnaround?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruny, the hammerhead is a style of turnaround, so it's not going to be a big loop. It's going to be where you'll come forward, back up, and turn around. We're trying to use as least land as possible, but to put in a safe turnaround for the fire trucks. And large equipment.
So turnaround, so turnaround won't occur then, as originally?
Absolutely. This is, this is one form of turnaround.
It, it's one form. Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Counsel Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I'm happy that Ms. Kenny's content. My question is to Mr. McConnell, I think. I know there's been some issues with permits being held up, et cetera. Assuming that PWT is going to have the turnaround and satisfy most of legal's concerns, how quickly can we begin issuing permits again?
Your issue is for Mr., your, your question is for Mr. Fair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel.
I've, I've lost track of the restructuring, my apology.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian, yes, once the, the road is constructed and the fire department is able to get vehicles and, and turn around, the city can issue the permits.
So, safe to say, within the next couple few months?
Through Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian, dependent on the construction side and Mr. Girardi's team, that would be the timeline that we'll be working under.
Good answer. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Hollingsworth?
Thank you. I think this question is directed to Larry Girardi. I just want for clarification, I was reading that, will there be a fence and a gate be put up to maintain this turnaround or, and a signage or something? And I'm asking this question because I did receive this question from a person that lives in the area.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, part of the agreement with the Conservation Authority was that we would move the fence or the gate, the existing gate that's there, and any area that we tend to open up to make the turnaround, that we'd have a fence across, so it's not noticed to be a thoroughfare. They don't want, you know, I guess, four-wheelers or what have you, transing through the property. So, that's part of our commitment with Conservation Authority to have access to their land, and certainly we'll abide by that.
Okay, just one further question. Again, this person that contacted me, this person's already seen people going to the end of the road since there are some changes have been done already, where people are parking. So the other question is, is there some that's going to regulate or monitor this so that there's not cars parking down there to go fishing and so forth?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hollingsworth, that would be something, that would be very difficult for us. I mean, we were asked to put in a hammerhead. I'll put the hammerhead in. I'll abide by the rules that the fire department requires. We've also agreed to, like I said, doing what Conservation Authority has requested. I'm really, wasn't aware of any issues with parking. There always is, usually in areas like this, or where there's dead ends and there's opportunities to go fishing. But at this time, I couldn't give you any designated plan that I have in place for policing it, because certainly that wouldn't be our position to be policing it.
Okay, and one final question. It sounds like you're going to put a sign up saying, "No parking, no dumping," and I'm assuming you'll probably put "No hunting" on the sign as well.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hollingsworth, no hunting would, there's no hunting within the city limits, so there's no need for, really, for a sign there. It's just not allowed within city limits. But certainly, we've also agreed through the Conservation Authority's agreement with us, that we would put signage up to keep people out.
Counsel Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Girardi, the, currently, we have some services being contracted out, snow plowing and garbage pickup. Once we do this work, are we taking over those services?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Nero, for this year, we will stick with the existing contractor to do the work. We've already signed that agreement for this year, so we'll continue on down that, down that road. There's no use me changing it now because I'm not sure whether, depending how far we get. It is our full intention to get it done, but we all know that we can get surprises in October, November, so.
Final question, the work that's proposed in this resolution, are we going to be able to do it within your existing budget?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Nero, yes.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Nero.
Okay. Oh, I was just going to call a vote, Counsel Fatah. Go ahead.
I'm just, I, I would like to suggest that maybe, that, or before we vote, maybe some representative might want to speak on it and say that they're...
Nope. Yeah. Okay, can we have a recorded vote? Madam Clerk?
Counselor Butland?
Yes, in favor.
Counselor Myers?
Four.
Counselor Bruny?
Four.
Counselor Nero?
Four.
Counselor Shoemaker?
Four.
Counselor Grandinetti?
Four.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Four.
Counselor Hoopinen?
Four.
Counselor Kompodich?
Four.
Counselor Christian?
Four.
Counselor Fatah?
Four.
Counselor Turco?
Four.
Mayor Provenzano?
Four.
Thank you for your attendance tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say thank you to you and to members of council for your action on this. It's much appreciated.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bonfaro. So, I think we are on to the consent agenda, council. Before that... Oh, sorry, we have to mark Counsel Shoemaker's conflict. Go ahead, Counsel Shoemaker.
Six-point-one on the retention of the restructuring law, the, one of, my, my firms involved in that process.
Understood. Counsel Shoemaker is conflicted on six-point-one. Just give a second here for the crowd to exit. Okay, so on the consent agenda, do we have any matters, council? We'll start with Counsel Butland, then we'll go to Counsel Myers. Counsel Butland, go ahead.
Six-point-three surplus management.
Sure.
Michelle is ready for that. She says she has already memorized my speech of some ten years. The new process, you're suggesting that we go back to a reserve for this surp... First of all, I guess I, I'm out of order here, my own order. What is the present surplus? I know we track it, and we should have a reasonable idea whether there will be a surplus.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Butland, I will do my usual response also. At this time, there is no surplus predicted to the end of twenty-seventeen. But that may change.
There, there will be no surplus?
There's no surplus predicted as of today.
Oh, as of today, okay.
The end of twenty-seventeen.
So, we don't track this as the year progresses?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Butland, yes, we do track it. If you recall from your last quarterly report that we gave you in June, at that point, we were saying, no, that we did not predict a surplus. We will be doing another quarter of the report for the end of September, which will be presented to council, and at that time, there may be some different items that have happened and incurred in the last quarter.
Okay, knowing full well where I'm going, because I told you I was going there again, your first point, I believe, is to go back to a reserve fund and then use the surplus in the event that it's more than the cost of living. I'm not wording that very well, but that's basically what it is, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Butland, yes, it is, but you will also notice by putting it into that reserve, that it also has to have a specific plan to, so that we're not utilizing the reserve on an ongoing basis. So it's a one-time use. So it would be used for something that was an anomaly in one year, and then we would have to, again, find a plan to get out of using that reserve in the following year.
Last question, I'll have comments at the end, Mr. Mayor. It's been suggested to me for the decade and longer that council should not do this. We really shouldn't do it because it'll come back to bite you. I'm not awaiting the bite, but what is the great impact upon us that is suggesting we better not do it, there's inviting diff- difficult times financially?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Butland, I think you saw the bite in the twenty-seventeen budget, where approximately two percent of the levy increase related to reserves and surplus use to reduce the levy. We didn't have a surplus, and we didn't have any reserves that we could use in twenty-seventeen, so it increased the amount that we had to incur in the levy for that year.
And what was our final tax levy last year?
Four-point-two-four, I think it was. I don't know the exact amount off the top of my head.
That's with, yeah, internal and external pressures, that's the city levy plus all the, the bodies we levy on behalf of, but the significant part of that was use of surplus, previous year's use of surplus.
Okay, I'll have comment at the appropriate time.
Very good. Okay, so I have Counsel Bruny and then Counsel Christian.
Question, Michelle, how did you come up with the forty percent, thirty and thirty?
There isn't any hard and fast rule as to what I came up with. I was looking at what was a higher priority, and I kind of attached a little higher amount to that, and I was, I basically had three different areas that I wanted to address, and I was going to just split it evenly amongst them, but like I said, with the tax stabilization, tax stabilization reserve, I found that as a higher priority, so I wanted to associate a little bit more to that.
Okay, thank you. And a question to the CAO regarding the chamber's letter that was dated September eighth. What are your comments regarding the letter? The points that the chamber made?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Bruny. I'll, I'll make a couple of comments and then turn it back to the CFO for a perspective from the financial side. The, the chamber's concerns are, have been articulated quite a bit in the, in my tenure here and, and prior to my tenure. Their big issue, of course, is tax ratios and tax fairness and tax equity in, within the community. This policy is, as the CFO has indicated, is a policy that looks at just a simple one-time surplus that would occur, so it's not something that's going to impact on an ongoing issue. So on the tax ratios, the tax issues, we are going to be responding to that, and we have been responding to that, and we're looking, we're going to be bringing forward a tax policy in this fall to address how we're going to try and move and make the shifts towards equity. In terms of the surplus policy itself, we, we think it has not that impactful, that much impact on what we're going to be bringing forward in terms of the tax ratio policy in the, in the fall. And again, reiterate that it's just a one-time amount of money that would be available, so it does not have application to ongoing expenses. So that are my comments on the, the correspondence that was provided. I will then look to the CFO for her further comments, if any.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Bruny, I concur with what the CAO said, and just to add another point, by doing that, where we address the, and apply the funds directly to one class, or possibly to subsidize the capping, it equates to a one-time use, or pardon me, it equates to an ongoing subsidization of that. So if we don't have a surplus in the following year, we're going to be in the same boat that we were going forward, where we were using it to reduce the levy. So it's kind of the same type of thing.
So on your point, number one, regarding the forty percent stabilization reserve, is that, it says property tax increases, is that for just residential, or is that for the, the whole city, commercial, industrial, et cetera?
That would be for the overall tax base, not just for one individual group, because again, we're looking at using it as a one-time tax stabilization, and we need to have an exit strategy to get out of that, or we're going to be in the same situation that we were in the twenty-seventeen budget.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so I have Counsel Christian.
Mr. Mayor, I applaud this approach. I think this is measured and makes sense to me. We're, you know, we're, we're not putting all of our eggs in one basket, but a couple questions to CFO Shell. It says in here that for the sta- tax stabilization reserve, forty percent, if we're going to, we're going to use it, we're going to, we're going to utilize it if, if the tax increase exceeds core inflation, are we using a trailing number or a forward inflation number? So in other words, are we taking last year's inflation rate and applying it to this year's budget, or are we taking anticipated inflation for the current year? It's more of a housekeeping issue, but I'm just curious as to how we're determining when we activate that fund.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Christian, my intention was that it would be an estimated forward core inflation, and also, it doesn't have to be used, it would be at the discretion of council.
Sure. And, and, and if we use it, if, let's, let's say, you know, in, in, inflation is anticipated to be one and a half percent, and, and our tax increase is, is looking to be two and a half percent, is it, the idea that we utilize the tax stabilization reserve to the point that we bring the tax increase in line with the anticipated inflation rate? Is that, or do we, or is it to the, is it up to the discretion of council to simply say we, you know, we're above that threshold, so we can use as much as we want that year?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Christian, no, we would want to keep it no lower than the core inflation, it's just if the budget comes in higher than that, then we would utilize it. But again, I stress that we would have to have an exit strategy in place.
Agreed. I've, 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 I have to admit, I finally bought into that whole idea of not using surpluses, so.
We've got one curve, Congress.
Yep. The point number four, it says, if any of the above items are maximized, the funds will then be equally allocated. Do we, what are the limits, and what have we established as the limits for those, for the, I would assume, long-term debt, capital reserves and tax stabilization reserve? Is, is, do we have a number yet, or are we, are we to establish those?
The reserve and reserve fund policy sets limits for those, and again, you would never hit the limit for the capital reserves because our asset management plan is in the tens of millions that it's unfunded, so I don't foresee in my lifetime ever hitting mine.
Then it won't be in mine either. But, but, but what about, say, the tax, well, I guess it's hypothetical, theoretical. The point is, though, that if we start to see large numbers, I guess at some point in the future, we'd have to make a decision as to whether we want to continue to allocate that way. Is that correct?
Council always has the option to adjust the ratios, the amounts, the reserve policy, and the limits on that, so it's always available to change in the future.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Counsel Shoemaker?
Actually, just had questions, not comments, your, your worship.
You have comments or questions?
Comments, not questions.
You have, yes. So we'll skip you, and we'll go to Counsel Hollingsworth.
Thank you. Most of my questions were asked, but I just have one more. Counsel Bruny, thank you for asking a question with regards to the business corporate tax side, and thank you, Mr. Horstman, for saying that in the future, you'd be addressing some further information about the tax equalization with regards to businesses. Simple question, this policy that we have in front of us, was it reviewed by the Finance Committee, and/or was it also drafted with regard, with the Finance Committee?
I, I don't believe it was at Finance Committee, but we'll have the treasurer speak to that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hollingsworth, the current terms of reference for the Finance Committee wouldn't necessarily include this, but we are having a Finance Committee meeting on Wednesday, where we are going to be looking at terms of reference and other items that the Finance Committee would like to participate in, and then that recommendation will come back to council, obviously.
Great. I'm looking forward to seeing further changes in the Finance Committee.
There you go.
Thank you.
So it's Counsel Shoemaker. Counsel Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Shell, on number one, on the stabilization reserve, what, is it staff's recommendation, I guess, that if we're not in excess of core inflation, that we leave that surplus there? And notwithstanding your answer to Counsel Christian, that we can do whatever we want?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Nero, staff would not recommend going lower than core inflation. That is kind of our annual estimate and what we're going to be working towards as our target, but again, it's, it's up to council to make the final decision.
Okay, and on, on number two and three, would staff's intent be to have options for council to apply the thirty and thirty, or would staff come with specific recommendations that, that thirty percent go? that, that 30% go to this project?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero. If this policy is approved as it stands, then any surplus, 30% would automatically go to capital reserves at year end and 30% would go towards long-term debt, first looking at internal funding arrangements and paying those off quicker.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I have nobody else on 6.3. So we have comments, so I apologize. So we have two people for comments. We have Counselor Butland and then Counselor Shoemaker with comments.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I hear, I see the policy and it's not the use of the surplus unless, but it's called a tax stabilization fund. And we'll use it if it goes to this cost of living index, I suppose. But council can override that should they wish. And, and if you do, you need an exit strategy. And I find it much more convoluted than it need be. Here's the formula, but you can break the formula should, should you wish. I don't want to call it semantics, but from my perspective, I, I believe it is. And I still say, oh, last year's increase in taxes was all because of the surplus. It really dragged us down. But I never heard that at the meetings. That unto itself created this dilemma for the tax increase. Again, I don't buy it and I'll end this much quicker than perhaps I would like to. But the money is not ours to decide. It's their money. It's the taxpayers' money. And here we are coming up with these formula, formulae, if you will, and say, no, let's keep it simple. And will it bite us? I don't know. We bragged about, Mr. Mayor, how low we got the tax increase. To how we got there, wasn't it great? And most people were quite content with that. So the bite did not hurt all that much. And let's say, okay, taxpayers, we overbudgeted. There was more revenue than we thought was coming in. We did a much, we're much more efficient. That's all good. So we have some money left over. And I can hardly wait till the, see the end of the year with the surplus we might have. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As is often the case, I'm going to disagree with my friend, Counselor Butland. This was, this surplus, or policy was brought forward to council as a result of a motion that council passed probably unanimously that I moved, Counselor Christian seconded, to develop this policy. So we asked them for it and here it is. And so that's probably another reason why I didn't come to the finance committee, because we, we as council asked that it be developed. So we asked that the policy be developed, that a third went into the tax stabilization fund, a third went into debt repayment, and a third went into asset management or capital projects. That's almost exactly what came. So thank you, Michelle, for, for the surplus policy. I think it's a good example of staff very, very explicitly and clearly filling out, fulfilling council's will. So that, that's why it's here and I think that it should be supported by all.
Thank you. Okay, well, I will only say from my perspective, I think it's a good demonstration of, of sound financial management. I think it's a responsible policy. So I'm supportive of it. Counselor Butland, 6.3 is now done. Do you have anything else in the consent agenda?
Yes, I have a number of them, Mr. Mayor. But I'll do another one and then allow, move on to the rest of council. 6.8, surplus of property?
Go ahead. 6.8, 235 Wellington Street West.
Oh, but, oh, this is a more general question?
Okay.
Thank you. To whom will this go? To?
We'll, we'll, we'll start with Ms. Nulokany, the city solicitor, and we'll see where it goes from there.
Ms. Kenny, do we sell property or release property? How does, how do these properties come about? It seems that it's an ad hoc basis. Something comes to our recognition or knowledge and you say, oh geez, or a taxpayer says this property next to me, can I buy it if it's available, if it's surplus? Is it ad hoc?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Butland. Yes, generally, we are approached by a resident. Or sometimes it's, you'll see a report tonight where Tom Vera has made a request because it's a property that we, that the city owns. We want to declare it surplus and sell it. So yes, it is an ad hoc sort of approach.
In an opinion, I suppose, should we not, and some years ago, some younger person said we need to inventorize, is that a good verb, inventorize all of the properties in Sault Ste. Marie that might be available, or might be considered to be surplus. And we had pictures of all of these properties. And then we actively said, these are available, people. And would that, in your opinion, could we do that? And number two, would that be a more effective way of selling property and increasing our revenue?
And through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Butland. I know it appears that we've got this cash that we're bringing forward from time to time, saying that we've got these properties, they should be declared surplus, and then we could realize some, some revenue. But in fact, what they are, are properties that are not serviced lots, properties that you cannot build upon, properties that are encumbered with easements. So we don't really have a huge bevy of properties from which to, to choose. Very often, what I'm presenting to council is a sliver that abuts somebody's property. Or in, like I just said, you know, we've closed our daycares, those properties will be declared surplus and made available for sale. But there really isn't a host of serviceable, buildable lots which we could market. And in fact, legal, I think on, in response to a, a resolution that you brought forward a few years back, did in fact go through that inventory to see what was available. And it wasn't, it wasn't the cash cow you'd expect it to be.
You're, to end this, thank you for the, the response. No, it was not a cash cow, did not become one. But the properties that were available were estimated appraised at $23 million. I wonder if we couldn't revisit that whole. Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the, the, that item? It's 6.8. Okay, so Counselor Butland has seated the floor here. Counselor Myers?
6.5, and I think this will be Mr. Santa Maria.
Well, we'll start with Mr. Vera, and then we'll, we'll.
I think it's Mr. Santa Maria's report, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, whatever, whoever.
No, no, he can come to the mic. He just wasn't. I didn't, I didn't see him there.
Okay, yeah, he's hiding behind the camera there.
Recognizing he's in the room. Welcome to council, Mr. Santa Maria.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Rob, the, you refer to the reserve fund that currently accrues as a capital reserve fund. Is that a capital reserve fund that's only for the SR? Or is it the operating budget capital reserve fund that's referred to in your report?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers. That fund is actually just for the SR Center.
Okay. So where I wanted to go with this is, in 2007, city council set up a conference and events fund that's intended to be used as one-time incentive for conferences and special events. It's a $20,000 fund and it's a line item in our annual budget, operating budget. So would this event development fund for venue events duplicate that, which is really an incentive program in any way? Because this is an incentive as well, isn't it? But is it, is it a different audience, I think?
Yes, it would. We were looking for another way of opening up means to go in and actively pursue with promoters. A lot of those are, they're asking us to co-produce, or come out and buy the show, or any kind of a supporting event.
Okay. Where I'm going there is, there is quite a bit of working out of a procedure and eligibility criteria and so on, related to economic impact when we established this conference and events fund in 2007 as a fund of council. So I'm curious to understand how there'd be economic benefit to use this as an incentive as well. Because let's face it, we have a capital reserve fund there because there's a lot of things that come up with SR, and some of them have been recently, where we need that capital reserve fund. So I don't want to shift that we have this, you know, taking it out of this capital reserve fund to use for an incentive if there's no benefit straight back to taxpayers. I don't, I'm just trying to get a handle on.
Counselor Myers, I'm just going to direct that to Counselor, sorry, Counselor, the CEO, Deputy CEO Vera, because he's, he signaled to me.
He's waving behind my back, okay?
He's giving me a shit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers. The intent for this, this event reserve really was to enable us to work with promoters to put on events at the SR Center where the analysis would more be on a business case level for individual events, which the city would feel confident would generate revenue that would support the operations of the SR Center. So there's a little bit of a difference between the, the, the event and conference fund versus this one, where what we're seeing as a trend in the industry is promoters coming to the city and looking to partner on these types of events. And our goal was to be able to provide more events to the citizens of Sault Ste. Marie where we feel a good business case could be made. And we could use this fund to allow us to do that.
Yes, I appreciate that. And, and I understand that nuance was there and that's kind of where I was going. So I'm going to press you a little bit more on that than through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Deputy CEO, is around the criteria. And I guess the reason I'm doing that, I want to qualify it, is that with the conference and events, it's a very trackable economic impact that results. For this, quite frankly, I'd want to know that it's being used in such a manner that it truly would, again, benefit not just for our entertainment value, but it's got to have a dollar equation back to it, an economic benefit back. Or else, again, what I'm, where I'm getting here is if we take it out of capital reserve, and then we need something and have to come to council and say we don't have enough money in our capital reserve, and yet we used funds to incent to get Elton John here or something, you know, that, that's my concern. Criteria, I guess, is what this is boiling down to. Will there be an eligibility criteria that has a direct economic traceable back?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers. That would be the intent, is that each one of these events that Rob would bring forward would have the estimated revenues generated by the center by hosting that event. And the criteria really would be based on the revenues that are generated from each event. And Rob would report on those different events and the success of the events.
Okay. I'm not going to hammer it to death. My point that I was making is that it needs to be incremental, it needs to be additional, in addition to what we're already getting. My last question would be, is the fund only for one venue, that being SR Center events? Or can the fund be accessed for an event in another city venue? Say there was a, you know, some sort of a smaller caliber event that accommodated at John Rhodes or something, can it be used there? Or is it because it's the SR Capital Fund, which I was clarifying upfront?
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers. That would only be for the SR Center.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Santa Maria.
Okay, on the same matter, we have Counselor Bruni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question to Mr. Santa Maria or to Mr. Vera. The $50,000, so you're going to just take $1 out of every?
Up to $1.
Per ticket that's sold at the SR Center?
Correct.
So the Greyhounds won't be included in that?
They're not included in that right now.
They're not included. Now, so it's going to be maxed up to $50,000. And basically, in your report, it says to co-produce or purchase an event.
Correct.
Is $50,000 enough?
No, it isn't. However, the, a lot of the regional or the smaller shows, community-based, a prime example might be one of the alumni games that we've been working on right now for NHL team. And we're unable to buy that show at the price that it is right now. And we're looking to seeing, well, the turnover time is also another shortfall that we have. This would allow us to do a break even quickly, talk to Deputy CAO along with the CFO, and, and run those through to see if it would be beneficial for us to go.
So I guess my question would be, wouldn't it be better to cap it off at a higher amount to probably do your job? Especially if you're bringing in a concert. $50,000 can wipe that out very quickly.
That $50,000 as well is going to be a harder thing to accumulate. It, it's not going to be overnight where you're going to get within a year $50,000. And this was something to bring in more events and more community-based events.
I just find it's a very minimal amount for you to do your job properly.
I think we have to walk before we can run too.
Okay, so we have Counselor Huppenen on the 6.3. No, we're just taking it on this one still.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
6.5.
6.5, sorry.
Yeah, okay, yes, it is, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
I agree actually with, through you, Mr. Mayor, with Counselor Bruni. I honestly don't think that $50,000 is enough, but it's a start. And thank you for thinking outside of the box, Mr. Santa Maria. I think it's great. So in other words, we're starting right now with zero and, and moving forward. So it'll, it's, it's going to take a few years for, for this to even come to any kind of fruition. So are you going to be waiting till you get to the $50,000 point before you start utilizing it? Are you going to sort of, when it maybe hits 25, if you need some of it, will you be using it then?
From what we, we know right now, those opportunities that come up, we can't tell you exactly when they are. I think we would have to, you know, keep a track record of what we have in that fund, and then basically do a break even when we get an opportunity.
Got it, okay. Do you have any functions or events that come to the city that they come year after year that you have to commit to under a contract?
In, in as what, well, for promoters or sporting events?
Events, such as circuses?
We don't commit.
No, so there's no contract. So you haven't signed a contract for next year. When, when would you have to sign that contract for next year?
They typically would want to secure a date, and we would hold a date and provide a contract for them right when we, we, when they get the confirmation that they want to bring it there.
So when was that last year? When did you get that for 2017? Just roughly six months?
I would have to check. It would probably have been about five, four or five months before.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we have Counselor Hollingsworth on the same matter?
Thank you. To you, Mr. Santa Maria. Just for clarification, going back to the question about, you said you are going to be, may be charging up to $1. Is that correct?
Yeah, it is. We currently have a, a scale of what we charge for, it's an internal ticket scale. So anywhere between, you know, $0 to $20 and all the way up to $150 plus. And that would be what we would charge our facility fee, and we would take up to that. Obviously, at the lower cost of a dollar, we're not going to be able to charge that dollar straight to that.
Right. And just for clarification, the events you have now, are some of those events for charity causes?
Yes, they are. We did a Goma Fall Festival with a few other, and we did a, another festival of reading with the authors that came to town. So those would qualify as well.
Okay. And out of curiosity, do you have charity events around, I don't know, like figure skating competitions or something like that?
That we could purchase, yes. A number of different events that we've had in the past typically come and rent the venue. Or with Curling, which was a larger scale, was a, quite a bit more, but we wouldn't be able to purchase something to that effect without coming to council first.
Okay. I guess I'm trying to get at is that if it's a charity event and they're selling tickets, where the money goes towards funding the charity, you'll have flexibility of maybe not even charging.
Charging for that, that's correct.
Right. So you may not even charge 25 cents hypothetically.
We don't, Dawn, a few of those right now.
Okay. So helping, still helping the charity?
It would.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a list here on the same, and this is on this matter, Counselor Fata?
I guess maybe I had a sort of a general question. I'll, I'll ask it anyway. Like, the venues that, that come here, obviously the SR, we want to utilize the SR Center, but the, the events that have been coming here also include the, the meal market. There's no relationship as far as working together in terms of drawing concerts and stuff like that to Sault Ste. Marie. Like, they work separately. There's no, there's no relationship there.
No.
Yeah, so they operate separately, yeah, okay.
Okay, Counselor Shoemaker, and then Counselor Butland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a clarification on the actual report. Under financial implications, it says, as the new creative it says, "As the new creative fund will be funded by ticket sales moving forward, there is no additional financial cost established fund, it will reallocate $50,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund toward event development." So does that mean that if approved tonight, we're putting $50,000 that's currently in the Capital Reserve Fund into this event development fund?
No, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, no, it means that we're starting from this point on, going forward.
Gotcha, so it's starting at zero.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then Counsel Butland to end this one off.
Just, just one question, a case study, the $50,000, I think I would agree with those who say, "It's not a lot of money for what I think, I think you're trying to do." A case study, when you're asking whomever to come forward to Sault Ste. Marie, what do they ask for? Do they want, you said co-promote, or do they want a cash incentive to, to bring them, that's the last step to Sault Ste. Marie? What would the money be used for specifically?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Butland, that money that, they would want us to purchase, a lot of them with the smaller events or shows, would want us to purchase that show. Oh, right. We've had an opportunity of doing a number of different smaller events, but they want us to, to buy it and then put the tickets on sale ourselves.
And so they're removed from it?
Correct, yeah, the risk, they want to ruin themselves in the risk.
In no way is this the top-flight entertainment, not denigrating what's coming here, but.
At $50,000, I don't think it would be, no?
Thank you.
Anybody else on that agenda item? Seriously, Counsel Nero.
Just one.
Okay.
Just one, and I just needed to clarify after all the other questions around this $50,000. Mr. Santa Maria, can you give us an idea how long it would take to get to the $50,000 collecting $1 per ticket? Is it three years, two years, one year?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Nero, we don't know, it's going to depend on how many tickets are sold and ultimately how many events that we put through.
Historically, on the events that we're having, do we have two or three major events per year, and if our draws on average are 3,000 tickets to each event?
I would guess that we would probably be in the area of accumulating that between the two and three-year period, but anything can happen in the market.
So about every three years, we would cap to 50, and you could stand up to that?
It would replenish itself, yeah. You know, 2016 was a very good year historically with our event venue centre, if you took a look at our website, we had a considerable amount of concerts and sporting events.
Yeah, I have no problem with this, I was just trying to get my head around the questions that were based around, "This is not enough."
Right.
I have to get it understood, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I thought this was a good initiative, not only from an economic perspective, but I think there's a quality of life issue here. The more activity that we can have occurring in the community, the more activity we can have at the SR Centre, the better it is for the community, and I think people really enjoy it when you do bring in concerts and shows, so I think we have a responsibility to do it for, for our community internally. So we're going to move on to the next, the Counselor who has an item on the content agenda. We'll go to Counsel Shoemaker, Counsel Myers, if you can replace me for a few minutes.
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to the City Solicitor on item 6.11, an RFP for our insurance services. I spoke to Mr. Shire today, and I understand this is an RFP for brokerage of our insurance, underwriting of our insurance, and adjusting of our insurance?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, that's, that's good. When was the last time we did something this extensive?
And again, through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Counsel Shoemaker, not in my recollection, we normally would just go to market for the insurance proper, but with the hiring of Adam as the risk manager, we're looking at revamping the entire way we're having carriage of city insurance.
Okay, that's, that's good, good news. I just had, will any of this look at, I know I've, I've asked some questions previously on self-insuring for minor issues, will any of this look at the potential for self-insuring on those minor claims that perhaps it's cheaper for us to, to do that?
And again, through you, Madam Acting Mayor, Counsel Shoemaker, the expert advice that we're getting, including that shared by Mr. Shire, is that that's not a, a great way to go. With our deductibles as high as they are, to some extent, we are self-insured. As you know, we cannot self-insure for auto, so that's out of the question. So we weren't really contemplating self-insurance other than the magnitude of the deductible.
And I presume the hope is that, that the size of our deductible will be reduced, perhaps, if we, if we get some good deals in this RFP?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, again to Counsel Shoemaker, it's a very complicated process, the bids come in and they're, they're voluminous, and it's a very tedious insurance-laden activity, so for, to have Mr. Shire actually have the experience and be able to thumb through that, I think that, yeah, we're going to be looking at deductible, but also coverage, and there's a number of factors that go in. Now we have somebody in-house, so we're not relying on someone outside who might benefit from one insurance company or another. I'm not, not saying that that's in fact what happened, but I guarantee you it won't happen this time because it's our person looking through it.
That's good. The only other question, just on the actual motion itself, that we authorized the legal department to prepare an RFP for the city's insurance provider, insurance policies, and for adjusting services, will that come back to us in a draft form for our approval?
And through you, Madam Acting Mayor, Counsel Shoemaker, generally it doesn't, we would just take that as our staff marching orders, and we'd proceed with the RFP, and proceed to market, and we'd report back to you with your recommendation. But if, I guess if that's the will of council, we could certainly do that?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to just add a couple words to the end of that motion, if, if that could be either, I don't know if it had to be pulled from.
Do you want to pull it out then, and so you make a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this matter before we do that? Can you hold on, Counsel Shoemaker, Counsel Butland?
Thanks, Ms. Kenny, the trends, it was some years ago, whatever, we brought up insurance here, and the people saying, "Oh, my goodness, if you didn't put a proper sign out to saying no biking, and no this or that," and they would say, "Well," and someone got injured, they said, "Well, that's not enough, you're not, you're still responsible." I don't hear that much anymore of that kind of thing, then municipalities are, are being hit with outrageous claims. Have the premiums gone down generally, stabilized, or have, in fact, they have increased?
Well, through you, Madam Acting Mayor, Counsel Butland, are outlandish lawsuits still being launched? Yes, absolutely, that's the case. We've been, we've been doing a very good job and, as a municipality, in terms of managing risk, and most particularly, I would say, having Mr. Shire as part of our team, because we are looking at trending, both historically and predicting into the future. We're looking at where we should put money and resources in terms of managing and offsetting risk. So for our municipality, we're, we're doing very well, and I can tell you that the industry was well aware that we had hired somebody internally, and I'm seeing the response to that, yes.
Okay, and a brief comment, I had brief dealings with this, Mr. Shire is his name, and I was quite impressed, so I think it was a good move on our part. Thank you.
Hey, Counsel Hollingsworth has something to add here, too.
It's more of a comment than a question?
Okay, well, you'll comment on the present format of the resolution now, and then we can add, come back to comments after Counsel Shoemaker makes this change, but is it on the, the one in the current format? Okay, go ahead.
This is directed more towards, basically, our legal. Attending AMO, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, we know that insurance is, continues to be a large cost, a cost, a huge increasing cost for municipalities, and for the viewers at home, it is such a huge expense for us, and unfortunately, we try our best to manage it, but I just want to say, I'm glad to see we're going out for, with an RFP, and I also want to echo those comments about your hiring of the gentleman with regards to the risks, because more and more articles are coming out in the papers, more and more information's coming out in the news, that insurance continues to be a main driver of most municipalities, and I think it's important for viewers at home to understand that.
Point well taken. Okay, Counsel Shoemaker, we'll come back. Is there anybody else that has any comment or question on the current resolution? Okay, Counsel Shoemaker, is it a very minor change that our deputy clerk can capture? Do you want to go to it then and let her bring it up?
Yes, so just the, add in the words at the end of the resolution, "For review and approval of council."
Okay, we're going to pull it out anyway and deal with it separately, but is that okay, Madam Deputy Clerk? You want to make just a friendly amendment while it's still on consent? Is that agreeable to council?
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll do it that way then. Okay, all right, moving on, anybody else with an item on consent? Oh, Matt, continue, okay, sorry, Counsel Shoemaker, continue.
Okay, thank you. 6.4, the media relations policy, through you to either the city clerk or our corporate communications officer, Ms. Vecchio.
I think our corporate communications officer's here doing her job, so she'll come in and join us. Ms. Vecchio, welcome to council.
Thank you.
There are some relatively minor changes, I didn't get to email Ms. Vecchio today, but there are some relatively minor wording changes I was looking at in the policy and hoping that I could just, rather than take everybody painfully through them over the next couple minutes, email them some suggestions to you on minor tweaks in the wording to, I think, clarify some of the points. Is that agreeable?
Sure, go ahead. Yes.
So do we do that now, or do you want me just to send them to you at a future date?
Just send.
Well, is there anything that's, I mean, it's on consent for being accepted as it is, is it something that's going to?
Not substantially alter the.
Is it grammatical, Counsel Shoemaker?
It's mostly grammatical.
Then you can just deal with Ms. Vecchio on that, I'm sure, and if, if there's an issue for you when you receive them, bring it, bring it back to council.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Counsel Shoemaker?
Yes, 6.15, building fee report.
6.15, the building fee report, I think I saw Mr. Paziban just step out.
Mr. Paziban is here.
Is he there? Okay, you're on, Mr. Paziban. That's the hot seat. Okay, Counsel Shoemaker.
Thank you. The, under the financial implication, through you, Madam Acting Mayor, under the financial implications, it talks about how the use of the reserve fund has stabilized the service levels. But if you look at the spreadsheet that's attached, it shows that after this year, there'll be, well, as, as of December 31st of last year, actually, there's 277,000 left in the reserve fund, but in one year, we used 166,000. So do we have a plan to get out of using the reserve? Because if not, it doesn't look to me like there's much reserve left to use if, if conditions stay the same.
Mr. Paziban?
To Madam Mayor Myers, to Counsel Shoemaker, yes, there is a plan. We provided council with a five-year continuing plan a couple of years ago, and with the increases in permit fees, that was going to stabilize the reserve going forward.
And are we seeing it work?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so that, I, I, I thought there, there was, so I, I, I sort of anticipated that that was going to be the answer, but is there any, how well is it working? Is it working as planned? Is it working better than anticipated?
It's actually working better than anticipated. Hampson did a report on user fees, and we only came up with 6% variance, which is, it's hitting our goal to be completely neutral revenue.
So I'm wondering if, if it's working better than expected, there's an opportunity not to increase the permit fees quite as high as is planned?
Not at this time, no.
No, that's not possible.
No, we have to stick, we have to stay with our, our five-year plan.
Why is that?
Because we approved it, didn't we?
Yes.
It's been an approved action of council, I would think, has it been? You can bring that back, Counsel Shoemaker, in a resolution.
Does the, does the CFO have something to add? Looks like she does.
Okay, through you, or through you, to you, CFO.
Through Acting Madam Mayor to Counsel Shoemaker, just to clarify a bit, as this CBO has indicated, the Hampson report said that the building permit fees were within 6% of full cost recovery. Those fees should be 100% cost recovery. So if we don't increase the fees going forward for 2018, and according to Freddie's plan, then we won't be 100% cost recovery, and that means that the taxpayer or our reserve will have to subsidize the balance.
Yes, but that, I, I don't think that's necessarily what I'm asking. If, I, I don't know what the plan to implement, to increase them is next year, it's probably in the 17, 15% range, if I'm recalling correctly? No?
No, it's not.
What, what is it?
It's, it's 7%.
7, okay, I knew it was a, a reducing scale. So if we did it 5% instead of 7, like, are we going to achieve 100% cost recovery?
No, we're not, we, we wouldn't, because we would have to take more money out of that reserve.
Okay, Counsel Shoemaker, I think we're kind of drifting a little bit. Let, let's deal with what's in front of us now, and if you want to bring something back, I'm sure you could write a resolution about it.
Yes, for sure. Okay, no, I, I mean.
We've got others that want to speak to this item, too, so.
It is, yeah, it, it's, it's apparent, looking at this, this chart, that there's not much left in the reserve, so I, you know, I both want to make sure that we don't use up all the reserve and that we aren't increasing permit fees more than necessary, so.
Staff's following a direction of council at this time, so.
Sounds good.
Can I go on to others? Okay, Counsel Hollingsworth on this item?
Thank you. This question is for Mr. Paziban, Chief Building Official. For the viewers at home, can you just refresh our memories, can you give us some examples of what we classify as a building permit? Correct me if I'm wrong, it's from putting out a new patio outside to something more larger. Can you give us some examples of what you would have to get a building permit for?
Acting Mayor Myers to Counsel Hollingsworth, our permits, our permit fees are based on applications for permits such as fencing, you know, single-family dwellings, and it deals with the Ontario Building Code covering structures.
And is also including installation of windows as another example, and doors?
Yes.
And the building permits, do you, we, as a municipality, come up with saying we want to start charging a permit for this, 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 or is it regulated by the building code?
Well, Acting Mayor Myers to Counsel Hollingsworth, how would it, how it works is you develop a building bylaw, and in that building bylaw, council decides what they're going to charge for building permits.
Okay, thank you. Couple more questions. The feedback I have been receiving from the business community is that businesses that are in the building construction industry are responsible, in most cases, to sometimes go and get those building permits on behalf of their clients, and they, from my understanding, have to come down to your office and wait some time to have the building permit issued. Having said that, can you help us understand, is your department looking at more ways to become more efficient on issuing building permits, which could hypothetically help with your costs and expenses that's outlined in tonight's report?
Acting Mayor Myers to Counsel Hollingsworth, we are looking at some avenues to have more efficiency within the office. Our, we're just sort of touching the online permit applications, and we're just sort of investigating that right now, for people who, you know, want to get their permits issued or reviewed online, but we're just looking at it right now.
And once you have the online, in your opinion, do you think that you are going to see a reduction in your expenses, and maybe to Counsel Shoemaker's point, your surplus may not be eroded as much, eroded?
I don't know if I really can answer that question at this time, until I, you know, we look at some models that some of the other municipalities have, before I can actually give an answer here at council.
Okay, two final questions. At this time, do you know when you may have just a start of something on the website where you can go and apply for a building permit on the website, do your Do your transaction with maybe a credit card on the website, eliminating any steps coming down to City Hall? When do you see this potentially happening?
Well, I've been looking at it for actually a few months this year, and we've been speaking with some of the municipalities, and we were hoping that we'd at least have something preliminary maybe for the end of the year or the building number 2018.
At the end of the year or 2018 building year?
Yes.
Okay. And just one final comment. Looking at these efficiencies, I think is a more positive step in the right direction to help businesses, help individuals that want to do home renovations to get along, get on with their projects, and potentially hoping to reduce our expenses here at City Hall. Thank you.
Counselor Grandinetti, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Freddie Pozzibon. For the record, I think myself being in the business, I think the building permit fees are a little high, and it was said in a report, I guess, a couple of meetings ago, that our building permit fees are high. Also, to offset the building permit fees, have we thought of cutting staff in your department? Through attrition, job sharing, something? Because us in the private sector, when we slow down, we either offer job sharing or lay someone off for two or three months, because the winner can't be busy here, aside from these commercial projects that are going on with these schools right now. And those are basically done through engineering services, that an engineer comes in, and then we also have a building inspector going afterwards and inspect the job, something that an engineer has already looked at. Are there ways to be more efficient in this matter?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Grandinetti. All I could suggest is, like, this report right here is just to give you, it's for information only. It's to give you a picture of what happened last year. We have an open house every year where we talk about building permit fees, and we welcome those kind of comments, and we take those comments and we try to work on them. This year, the open house will be probably at the end of September, and you're welcome to attend, and then we can look and discuss those kinds of items then.
It's just that I missed the one last year, and then one of the larger, probably the largest buildings in town came out, and I asked him what happened in the meeting, and then someone had suggested, whether it was you or someone else, that if we don't raise the building permit fees, we're going to have to wait up to 24 to 48 hours for an inspection. This is coming from this gentleman. Now, for the amount of building that's going on in the city, I don't believe in that.
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Grandinetti. That is what's the requirement in the Ontario Building Code, but our service level, we try to do it within 24 hours.
Yeah, and I'm not complaining about the service level, because it's good.
Thank you.
No, no. You have some pretty good inspectors out there. One more pretty much comment. Counselor Hollingsworth was talking about online permits. I've done this a few times where it's just, you kind of get screwed up on one job, and you, okay, I'm going to come in your office to do whatever, and I call your desk and tell them, listen, I'm at so-so's address, I'll be in within a couple of days, or the homeowner will be in within a couple of days to grab the permit. Is there something that we could do that the homeowner or someone like myself could call it in, and then we get invoiced or the homeowner gets invoiced through either their tax bill or through the mail?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Grandinetti. Your permit fees cover your whole cost of, you know, that, the work that you're doing. To add more fees, if there's a, we have them for reinspection, and we use them not often, though, because we like to give the benefit of the doubt that people may make some errors out there, and we have to go back and re-inspect. So, we have that system of reinspection, and we have charged, but not often. So, there is a mechanism there. We can be more aggressive on it, but then we have to also look at what pushback from the public.
No, I'm just, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Freddie, just on smaller jobs, your roofs, your windows, your doors, just on the smaller ones, not so much the bigger ones. So, it's just, it'll be more efficient, and like you said, sometimes I'll come here and I'll have to wait upwards of half hour to get a permit. Because no one really, no one really wants to come down here and wait a half hour, 45 minutes, just to grab a permit for the roof. So, if we make a simple phone call, hey, we're getting a roof done within a couple of days. Send them an invoice, and it's done.
Okay, I think, though, we, I heard Fred, Mr. Pozzibon, say, we have an open house that we canvass, like, these kind of discussions and these issues and these matters, and it's probably worth, like, because you're speaking really from your perspective as somebody's member of the industry, probably worth engaging at that open house, and then you can maybe give staff some direction and guidance on how you think it would work best, Counselor.
Yeah, it's just, it's just hard when they have just one open house. It's last year, we were, some of us were busy and we couldn't attend.
I suspect very strongly that if you called Mr. Pozzibon and set up a 101...
I talk to him frequently.
Yeah, 101 meeting with him, he'll be happy to meet with you, but bless you.
Thank you, Freddie.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem. Anybody else on 6.15? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Pozzibon. Do we have any other matters on the consent agenda? Counselor Hollingsworth?
6.7, Prince Township Reciprocal Emergency Assistant Agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Just quickly, just an easy question. I'm assuming that we have similar agreements with other surrounding townships or towns. I guess I should direct this to our CAO or...
Sure.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. I'll actually turn it to the fire chief, who's in attendance tonight, and if there's any further questions, we have Ms. Lauren Perry, that's our emergency manager, assistant chief, that would be able to respond further.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. Yes, we do.
Okay, and with regards to the other agreements, I'm assuming that the agreement that you have in front of us is going, is very similar to the other agreements?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else on that matter?
That's our question.
Seeing none. Counselor Button on that matter?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
To the chief, we still provide fire protection to Rankin, and I believe now Garden has its own fire department. And comment about our arrangement with Sioux Michigan, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Button. We have an international mutual aid agreement with Sioux Michigan. When they, if they deem necessary to call us, they would activate that agreement, and we would reciprocate that for them.
And they reciprocate for us in case of need?
Correct.
And Rankin, they give us a yearly stipend?
Yes, they, we have a payment agreement with Rankin, yes.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Counselor Hollingsworth, on the same matter?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Button. That's a very good question about Sioux Michigan. Does that include hospitals as well? If we need to use Sioux Michigan's hospital for some reason, is that, there's an agreement there? Do we know?
That wouldn't be properly directed to the chief. I don't, I don't, and it really isn't municipal either.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else on that topic? Anything else on consent? Seeing nothing else on consent, Madam Clerk, if we can have the consent motion, please.
A motion by Counselors Hoopin and Anira resolved that all of the items listed under date September 11/2017, Agenda Item 6, Consent Agenda, Save and Accept, Agenda Item 6.12, Be Approved as Recommended.
All in favor. Carried. Well, I think that brings us to item 7 on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Yes, it does. I have a motion by Counselor Shoemaker, Anira, resolved that this council proceed into committee of the whole for the purpose of the item referred to it by council, capital priority setting, and Agenda Item 7.1.1, 2018 capital prioritization, a motion by Counselor Shoemaker and Turco, resolved that the reporter, the chief financial officer and treasurer dated September 11/2017 regarding the recommendations for the 2018 capital prioritization be received for information.
So, counsel, I just wanted, before we begin this, I just want to give some preference here. This is before us tonight for information. I think it's a really positive start to our budgeting process, and the purpose is to take a look at what staff did and how they did it. I thought, I want to commend staff for the thorough work on this, because they're showing you, you know, they're showing you the homework, right? They're showing you the matrix and how they rank these things. I think it's positive that staff worked together to go through that process as a corporation as a whole, and that we have that to look at now and answer any questions about and have some discussion about. And we could take that, and we will have, over the next few months, a lot of time to sort these things out and talk about them as we budget over a longer period of time, and as the CFO likes to say, we plan the budget and then budget the plan. Is that what you say, Shell? She says this to me all the time. I stopped listening. But, but it's, it's a positive step forward. I think it's really positive that we have this before us tonight, so I want to thank them for their work on it, and, you know, I hope we stay at that level where we're asking questions and looking at the whole thing, and then we can have a larger kind of discussion through the budget process about what we want to see happen, when we want to see it, when we want to see it happen. So, this is here for your information, and obviously to bring everybody up in speed as to where things are at and what you could expect to see as the budget unfolds. That noted, we are in committee of the whole. Counselor Shoemaker's nodded at me three or four times now, so we'll start with, we'll start with him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't see on the list a specific item. When we reviewed the downtown parking operations, there was a suggestion in that report that we speed up the purchase of pay and display machines for all the parking lots so that we could reduce the annual deficit on the parking lots and start generating revenue right away. But I don't see it anywhere on the list, so I'm wondering, perhaps it was just an omission. And I would suggest that it fits nicely into the criteria, because it helps reduce one of our deficits.
Okay, so let me, I'm not sure who, if that was canvassed by senior staff or who would have canvassed it, so we'll start with the deputy CEO of Community Services, who has transit in his portfolio. Do you have any feedback on that project, Mr. Verret?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, I don't have feedback on that project. I know it wasn't put forward by the Transit and Parking Commission in terms of their capital priorities. I do know that Don Scott, before I left, was in contact with the makers of the pay and display machine to see if we could negotiate a payout over a number of years, so I'll have to report back on that.
Okay, that'd be, I appreciate that.
So, I think, so on that note, we'll have the deputy CEO look into that project and get back to us on it.
Perfect. I don't know how extensive into this list we're getting.
We're going to give you a couple swings at it, then we're going to move, and then we'll see what else we get. So, you got two more.
The McMeekin Center ice resurfacer for 112,000. This probably, if I had to guess, is as a result of the CO investigation and recommendations that came out of the fixing of that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, that's correct. You know, we have an aging fleet of ice resurfacing machines. The one machine does continue to give us problems, and this is put forward to address that.
I just am concerned that we're spending a lot on the McMeekin. We've spent a lot to determine what the problem is. We've spent a lot to fix the problem, and now we're spending even more to fix sort of associated and ancillary problems. So, I think it's a lot better to have a plan not to, you know, go down the road of pouring a bunch of money into the McMeekin, rather than this plan, which appears to be to pour the money into the McMeekin, so...
This is for the mobile vehicle that could leave the McMeekin, go to a different rink if, in the event we weren't using the McMeekin, though, right?
Certainly, except that I'm not sure that, you know, it's necessary at other rinks. I'm sure we could use it. I'm no doubt there, but if we don't need to buy it, I don't see, you know, I would rather see a comprehensive plan in place to phase out spending money on the McMeekin rather than a plan to...
Okay, so, well, I think you get a sense of the issue Counselor Shoemaker's raising.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Shoemaker. I think two things. We do have the other arenas that also have aging fleet of ice resurfacing machines, so it certainly would be put to use there. We are expecting the results of our ice utilization study in our report there, and so pending the results of that study, you know, there could be another ice surface proposed or a plan put together, depending on the results of that survey. So, in any event, anticipating that, you know, we're not thinking this would be money wasted and that the machine will be required in any avenue that the city pursues going forward for ice.
Okay. One more, Counselor Shoemaker.
Electronic voting machines at Council 31, the lowest item on the list, $8,100. I think council got that report, and I suggest that this is an easy win for us and would help increase accountability for only $8,100. It's the cheapest item on the list and would be an easy one to move up to number one or two, in my opinion.
Okay. Okay, so, thank you for that, Counselor Shoemaker. I had Counselor Hollingsworth, and then Counselor, Counselor Hollingsworth and Counselor Grandinetti.
Thank you. To the staff, putting this together, this is excellent. I'm ecstatic, and for many reasons. One, it just helps to tighten up the budget process so much more, and as you know, I see so many great positive changes on just making City Hall a little bit more lean when it comes to be more of a corporate structure, so well done. I like it very much. I might post it on my living room wall. So, my question is this. I like how you prioritize. I like how you explained the approach you took. When does this list close? As in, I'm sure that after tonight, some of us around the table will may have some other suggestions for the list. So, I guess we fill out that form that you showed us earlier, and when does this list close?
The CEO will address that first, and then the treasurer.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. Again, this is a work that goes through a cycle. You're getting it on an earlier time. As committee of the whole, we're going to be taking some of the feedback tonight and giving it consideration. There's also going to be the opportunities through the forms and through emails that you might send to the CFO that would also give us some highlights relative to this that we'll take into consideration. The capital budget will ultimately come back to council for initial review October 23rd of this year, and final approval is December 4th for all budget, of the 2018 budget, and that's the forum where you actually will be landing it. But what you'll see in terms of the packages coming forward for those two dates will include, of course, consideration for that feedback that we're getting from council through committee of the whole and through those other avenues.
Okay, perfect. So, it sounds like if we think that there's something on the missing on the list, just email you, and we can discuss it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll turn to CFO Shell to tell the specifics that she would be looking for on that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. My understanding, as a committee of the whole, that council was going to do a straw vote on any items that they wanted to see changed within the list as it exists. If there's other items that aren't on the list, staff can report back, such as deputy CAO for CDENS has indicated for the parking. This is a new process, so it's kind of, as we go, you know, we'll address some of the questions that are happening, but I'm not looking for ranking and full business cases being presented from council, and I was hoping tonight we would have a bit of an indication as to whether the 16 items that are reflected from the staff recommendations is where we're going to move towards and start looking at funding options, or whether council has totally different ideas in regards to that.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Grandinetti, and then Button.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number four, the hands-free radios. I guess this question would be for Mr. Girardi. What type of radios are these?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Grandinetti. These are all your CB radios that are in the trucks, and even the handhelds.
So, you're replacing the CB radios now with something that's not handheld?
No, actually, we're replacing our radios to digital, and digital will give us the allowance to go to hands-free.
Okay.
Right now, the old analog radios, we're unable to put them to hands-free, and we won't have that option, so we're changing them all over to digital, and with the digital radios, we will be able to move on towards hands-free.
Okay. Item number 25, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Girardi again. Pavingstone Boulevard, 250,000. It says here that pavingstone boulevards pose a potential safety and liability risk. If that's the case, why are we still doing it to all our new roads?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Grandinetti. I might have to refer the question to why we're still doing it to the planning department for response, but quite frankly, we have a lot of interlocking breakthrough at the city, as you know. we have a lot of interlocking brick through it, the city, as you know. And we have a lot of issues with weeds and what have you and resetting. Because when we look at our slips, trips and falls, a lot of our slips, trips and falls are obviously not only with sidewalks but with the areas that have interlocking brick. Over the years, a lot has been put in. But now it's aged. And now with frost heave and everything else, we have to go back and do more maintenance to it. So it has presented to us to be a challenge. We don't have the complement to handle the challenge that's been coming forward. We're trying to address it as best we can. But that's why we've raised this.
Okay. And one more item, item number 27. This, I guess, would be to either Mr. Verre or Don McConnell. I guess Don McConnell might be able to answer this one. Was there not a study done on this property back in 2008 or 2009 as for environmental assessment? And what it's going to cost to clean this property?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Grandinetti, the property in question is the eastern part of the Gateway Site. And yes, over the years, and this would date back more than 10 years ago, we do have pretty good environmental assessment data on the site. The question becomes then, and this was as a result of a resolution from Council, how do we develop that as a park? Because a park has the highest cleanup level that you can get basically for environmental contamination. And what they do actually is they look at the level of environmental contamination and they design the park to minimize the cost that we would have to do, but also to create kind of an interesting urban park. And a record of site condition filed with the Ministry of Environment would be required before we were able to start construction. And that's what this is about. So yes, we do have base data on what's in the soil, what contaminants are there. We do not have a plan for dealing with those contaminants.
If I remember right, it is very expensive to clean that property, probably more than what we, for the city, purchased it at the time. Do you think we're wasting our money, $185,000, doing this environmental assessment?
Mr. Mayor, again, to Counselor Grandinetti, the cost of cleanup varies greatly depending on what you're going to use the property for. If the property is simply going to be used for commercial purposes, the cost of the cleanup would be very little. However, as I mentioned earlier, putting a park in is a very high standard of environmental cleanliness. So yes, that would be expensive. And again, this is in response to a resolution from Council asking staff to report back on the possibility of building a park on the eastern part of the Gateway Site.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are you in the same manner, Council Myers? Go ahead.
Yes, I actually echo what Counselor Grandinetti's saying on this because I think that until such times as we really determine and decide exactly what we would want to do with it, it's a bit of a, you know, an unnecessary spend. Because if we're not going to actually turn it into a park, which I, I mean, I'm aware of what Director McConnell was just saying about the depths of environmental restoration and cleanup that has to be done. It's the highest level for sure. We've been through this, that whole Gateway Site. I don't understand why we would spend the money on it. I know there was a Council resolution to look at it, but we can certainly just have a report back and put that one to bed. I mean, I can't see that it would be one of our top priorities. That's my comment.
Well, let's speak to that then. So how did that make it up the priority list, Counselor, sorry, Counselor, Mr. McConnell? How did you land, how did staff land on that being where it is?
Mr. Mayor, it didn't actually make it very far up our priority list. If you look at the list of various projects, it's pretty close to the bottom. And I think that's a reflection of the rating system that staff went through. Perhaps Michelle would like to comment on that further. But I don't think any of the senior staff believed that this was going to be funded at the end of the day. But it was a request from Council and we felt obligated to consider it.
Oh yeah, this isn't, this isn't one of the projects that is being funded. No, this is off the, yeah.
27.
Yeah, okay. Sorry. The way it was being spoke about, I was confused and I thought...
Well, it says grant-eligible. So I don't even want to see us trying to seek funds for it. It says grant-eligible in the checked box beside it?
But I think just so we're all clear on this, if we say to staff, we like what you did, keep on moving, that wouldn't make it into the project. That wouldn't make it into the group of things they would proceed with.
Yeah.
So they're not actually immediately moving ahead with that specific item. Anybody else on that item? Okay, so I have a list here and Counselor Butland is next and then Counselor Christian.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I concur with your comments. This is very well done by staff. It's very defensible how you put it out with the criteria, et cetera, et cetera. And it's very hard to argue with the first 16 for sure. I guess I'm looking for guidance. Are we going to have, I don't think we're trying to do this tonight. For instance, the Greco Pool Filter Replacement for a minimum amount of money, I would say, well, shouldn't we have to be doing that? But on a bigger, the Emerald Ash Borer, are we still treating trees and we're just not going to replace the trees on Queen Street? And number three, the Millennium Fountain, which is quite a ways down the list. But that was one item that the community, at least as far as I was concerned, were pushing back. Say, we want to see that fountain on land. I guess my question is maybe to the CAO, how do we, if we wanted to address these specific items, when will we do that and how would we do that?
I could speak to that too. Part of the thinking was if there was something that wasn't on, if there was something on the list that they were going to move ahead with and we didn't want them to move ahead with it, and we gave that indication fairly clearly by a straw poll or by, you know, a significant amount of discussion, they would not move ahead with that project. If there's something on the lower part of the list that you'd like to see them move ahead with and it's clear that a majority of Council support that, we don't vote in the Committee Hall, they'll move it up. So let's just take your Greco Pool, for instance, at 17 for $32,000. If you'd like to have a conversation about that and like to signal to staff you'd like to see that happen, staff will go away and figure out whether that can happen and where it would happen and how it would happen. So we would take each one separately because obviously a conversation about the Greco Pool, which is currently ranked at 17, it's a $32,000 spend, is a lot different than a conversation about the Millennium Fountain, you know, the price it's at. So if you wanted Counselor Butland to start a discussion about moving one of these things up, I think you have, about the Greco Pool, we would, and if that had the favor of the majority of Council, staff would then take that away and try and sort that out.
Thanks for the clarification. It helps. I don't know we're in any position, how serious is not replacing the Greco Pool Filter. I suspect you wouldn't put it number 17 if it was absolutely essential. And the other ones...
So let's start there. Let's answer that question. Mr. Verre, on the Greco Pool Filter System, you know, why didn't that make it into the list of what we're going to do this year?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Butland. It is correct. It was flagged by staff, but they didn't feel it was an urgent need to be done this year. But they have flagged it as something that will be coming down the pipe. Any items that staff felt were urgent, that had to be done next year in order to maintain service, were flagged as we went through the process of staff. And so that's really how we came up with those priority rankings. Again, this project, the Greco Pool Filter System Replacement, was not deemed to be urgent to be done next year in order to provide that service.
Okay. Anything further on that specific issue?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. That helps. But for instance, the fountain, I don't think, I don't know if anybody else is, but I'm not prepared to put anything forward tonight and say, we need to do this because there was considerable pushback. But I wouldn't mind revisiting it in the future. And we're putting the note out here now to the general public. At this point in time, there will not be a millennium filter, a millennium fountain. Thank you. I'm stuck on the previous one this year. So...
Counselor, well, I have a list here. Is it on the, so we have Counselor Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question relating to the pavingstones was asked, I just want to compliment staff for this report. And I'm glad that you referred to it as a matrix system, much like a prior resolution that I brought forward. And apparently, I can't take any credit for this process, but nevertheless, I'm gratified that staff has used such a system.
Nevertheless, we'll try.
But it does make sense. I mean, you could see that there's a process that was used to vet these items and they worked through it. And it's easier for Council to accept the recommendations, knowing that a system was used to evaluate them. My only other comment would be I caution Council, I mean, it's going to be our job to make a final decision on these capital budget items. But I caution Council about coming forward with their own ideas of what should be capital expenditures. That's the job of our staff. So I'm not going to pretend like I understand the issues that staff is dealing with and the requirements of the city. So unless something glaring is missing, I really think that it's up to staff to come forward with these recommendations. It's our job as a governing body to put the final stamp on it, but certainly not to get into the weeds with them and determine what we should be spending dollars on for capital spending. Thank you.
Okay, so Counselor Bruni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And question to the Deputy CEO, Girardi, regarding line number 12, the snow dump property at $650,000. I'm just curious, how did we go without it? Our last winter was approximately 14 feet of snow. And now it's put into our priority list.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruni. Since this past winter, we've then again lost another snow dump. We had the one in behind the Honda dealership that is presently being looked at to be sold to the owner of the Honda dealership. And the reason for that is, is we're doing some work in that area, engineering, actually, the Engineering Department has work being done in that area with regards to flooding issues. So we thought it wise to be moving that site or exiting that site and potentially looking for new. The reason why we're looking for the $650,000, obviously, is I've been coming back to Council for several years. And yes, last year, we had a lot of snow, but the travel, what we called the travel aid one behind the Honda dealership, took a considerable amount of that snow. So with losing that one, losing the Gladstone, Mill Market over the last few years, I even had to, if you recall last winter, I tucked some snow into Mill Market even though that's no longer a snow dump, just a short portion has left the city property. So I found every nook and cranny to tuck snow and I put it there. We need to have a plan in place because I have to prepare it through the Ministry of Environment. You have to have a set plan for your snow dumps. I'm losing all the locations that I had for snow dumps. So I have to prepare for the future. So looking at these dollars, is this something that needs to and absolutely needs to be done this year? We need to put it, I've been asking for several years. So we're getting to the point where, yes, if we have considerable snowfall like we had last year, I am going to run into problems. So that's why the ask is then.
Mr. Girardi, you mentioned three snow dump areas have been eliminated. And mostly that's central area? This one is for East End?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruni. Yes, we're trying to find something that's close to like the Peepatch area and the downtown area so that we reduce the amount of turnaround time and amount of fuel. Because if we start traveling long distances, certainly the city might have property further outside the city. But our turnaround time with the minimum amount of trucks that we have and the amount of fuel we'll be using will far exceed with the cost of putting a piece of property in place in the right location.
What about rental or leasing a piece of property? Would that be more financially...
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruni. I've looked at that also. But with the new standards from the Ministry of Environment, we do a lot of prep work on a piece of property and then someone decides not to lease to us. Then we're stuck with a situation where we've invested money and now it's for loss, right? Because they have other intentions to develop it for whatever. So I just think it's wiser for us to have our own.
Just ask the question.
Yep. Thank you, Counselor Bruni. We have Counselor Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's the item I was going to zero in on too, through you to, well, I guess we're not formal, are we? So, Mr. Girardi, you started to say, I thought, a few moments ago, that it's absolutely critically essential have to do this year. And I think I was hearing you start to say that it doesn't necessarily have to be done this year, but you've been asking for several years and it needs to be done. And there's a process and a timeline involved to do it. I want to come back to the Millennium Fountain. Obviously, as you know, that was near and dear to my heart. I brought the resolution some months ago on it. The Millennium Fountain would be a one-time project. If we could take the 400, and I mean, you've put $450,000 down here. And I remember when we talked several months ago, I was quite taken aback by this figure of $450,000 because you didn't indicate that to me several months ago. I think you thought it was going to be something, you talked to me about prefab and so on and so forth. In this, it's talking about a splash pad, it's talking about a skating area. But just to put a Millennium Fountain on the land, I don't know that we'd have to be at $450,000. And that's not what the resolution at the time asked for. The resolution asked for a land-based fountain, not with a splash pad, not with a skating area. So I'm a bit discouraged because I'd like to see the fountain put back in the area of Clerk Park on the land. I think you had done some preparatory work and inquiring about a prefab option, I think you had told me about. And I would like to propose to Council that we reduce the $650,000 by maybe as much as half for this year and use the difference to go forward with a fountain back on Clerk Park. As Counselor Butland already raised, it's been a high-demand matter in the downtown area. Like, we're surrounded by a number of multi-residential complexes in that area. And people have really missed it. And, you know, we had it for 17 years or 16 years, I should say. So I fully accepted why we couldn't keep the one we had. I totally supported that, as you know. It was a waste of money to carry on. But I'm quite disappointed to see almost a half a million dollar item attached to putting a land fountain. Because we weren't looking for something terribly elaborate, just a land fountain. Not with a skating rink and a splash pad and everything else, so...
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers. Again, the number that's there, there's some confusion here because there's two departments that are involved with parks here. So I'd have to say some of this question would go to Tom Verre's area with Virginia and some of the things that they've wanted to incorporate into this. And what our original plan was to just put a fountain. I think what has to be done to get to the final dollars, you need to put a, if you seriously want to do it, put a committee together, find a team that's, decide exactly what you do want. Because we could, again, there was conversations about putting one by the art gallery. There's, because that would be a great place to put it on land. There were, if you talk to the Planning Department, talk to Don McConnell, he can speak to old plans that were in place from years back about it being located in that area. So that's why the dollar figure has changed. Because if you become elaborate and you do something substantial, it's going to cost you that kind of money. So I think there's a little more research that needs to be done on that. And of course, you need to determine exactly what you want. You and I have chatted and it could be anything, but you and I talked, you know...
Well, but there's a resolution.
Something very simple.
There is a resolution. And the resolution did say, it just said, land fountain in the same vicinity of Clerk Park. That's what, I mean, I can go back and pull up the resolution. But what I'd like to tonight is at least get it back, that let's do some more work on this and find out truly what we could do for an acceptable, respectable land fountain, not some, obviously, little sprinkler thing that's $50,000. I'm, you know, I'd like to see us do something here.
My comment on this would be, and I think this is for future consideration, when staff isn't, when we're not in a position to actually move forward with a project, and I don't feel like we're in a position to move forward with a Millennium Fountain project, whether it's a small one or a big one, or whether it's wherever it would be in Clerk Park and what accessories we have with it, it should probably not be on the list, right? Because the things that come on this list are things that we could move ahead with now or not move ahead with. I think what we're hearing is we'd like staff to do some more work on what this could look like. I don't see this as being funded for 2018 though, considering the current level of readiness of the project.
No, I don't either. But I don't want to ever sit here a year from now and hear the same thing. Like, so if we have to carve something out and put it towards it, I mean...
So as a project in 2018, I think what I'm hearing, and we'll just get some nods of heads of Council, would Council like to see staff work on some options for the fountain in 2018 to be funded in 2019?
I don't know that we need a committee per se. I mean, I'm glad to do that, but that's not...
We're not striking one right now. We're just giving staff some direction. So on that specific item list, we're not looking for it this year. But I think what you're hearing is take a look at that for something you'd work on in '28 to bring back to us for 2019 budget.
For those of us who are here.
No, you'll be, well... No, you'll be, well, so, so, anything else on that one, councillor Myers? So, we'll go to councillor...
Well, it ties to the other, like, my suggestion was, I'm, I'm asking, councillor Bruny started the conversation, I find $650,000 is a massive amount of money out of this list towards one item that we all know sadly is only for a few months out of the year. You know, when you balance out the outcome, again, can we not start to set aside some of the funds that Deputy CEO Gerardi said he's been asking for for several years, but does it have to be $650,000? I mean, if we could cut that back to, you know, some other figure, 400,000, so we could do some of these other items that are also coming up before we get around this table tonight, so I'm just putting it out there.
So, we need some direction from staff on how they arrived at the 650, and whether the 650 is necessary.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Myers. First of all, of course, you can set aside funding, whether it is done this year, whether it's done in the next couple of years, it would be great. Again, like I said, we started asking this for quite a while, I've set the alarm quite a while ago. We put the funding in place for 650,000, because there's gonna be several thousand dollars needed to prep the land, once we even make the purchase. How did we set a budget? Well, quite frankly, we looked around with properties around the city are worth, vacant chunks of land of this size, and that's kind of the dollar figure, plus the prep work that would be required, so that's where the dollar was setting. But can you do it over a couple of years? Certainly, it's something that can be done over a couple of years.
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, we're in committee of the whole, so if you don't mind, and we keep going on this, there's a few things that come to mind. One, I mean, it's a huge amount of money for us to just say, oh, sure, 650. I mean, I'd like to see a breakdown, how did we arrive at? I'd like to see where the proposed sites are. There may be impact on ward councillors as to where those sites are. I mean, there maybe needs to be some awareness of where are these pieces of property that you're looking at to acquire? And then it says in the notes here, something about also what's needed is because of being adjacent to the businesses. Well, I think you're talking about the Wampanoag situation and having to get rid of the, you know, the one that, you know, is, is going to be put up for sale, so you lose it. I mean, I think there's a lot more, when we're dealing with an item of that size, that magnitude, you know, I think we need a little bit more information about it, rather than just nod our heads. I realize we're not making decisions tonight, but I, I will sit here at budget night, and I won't have any more information than I have tonight, that's 650,000, and where is it gonna be, you know, and so on and so forth.
Councillor Myers, we have the CEO.
Thank you, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Myers, and I guess we're committee of the whole, councillor Myers, the, I'll ask the CFO also to make some comment, too, but I, I think I saw the nodding of the heads from council, that they would like more work to be done on this particular initiative and come back with a report on it. So, we would take that as an advisement in terms of bringing those reports back, but also under advisement in terms of what we're looking at when we come forward on October 23rd with our capital budget. The intent, though, was, again, we do have some standing orders from council that we did put into this package to make sure that we made council aware that we did give consideration to it and then dismiss it, but we just said it's prioritized differently based on the model. So, but we would come back, and I'm seeing from the nodding of the heads, it would be in 2018 for likely to be placed into 2019, and we'll take that under advisement as part of the direction from council. On the second piece, I'm looking to councillor Shell, who I know, I'm sorry, councillor Shell, to CFO Shell, who was, has been nodding vigorously at me, if she could cut in on a couple of moments.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to council. One thing I just wanted to clarify, councillor Myers was indicating about funding and how we would split the funding and fund it over different years. The purpose of tonight's meeting is not to determine the funding. As the mayor liked to say, I say, budget the plan, not the other way around. By the way, I didn't coin that phrase, so, but, though, once we get an idea of what is prioritized and what direction council is kind of indicating to us, it's gonna go back to finance, and we're gonna provide council options to fund the items that are gonna be prioritized here. We may not be able to fund them all, we may have to make some tough decisions on ones that we're going to have to fund and how we're going to do it, but those options will be brought to council at that time. So, we just wanna know, what is the plan, and then we'll, we'll give you some options on how to get there.
Okay, so, the amounts could be, like, if there's an option to not fund something to the extent that's been proposed tonight, can that come back as options as well? I guess that's what I'm trying to mine down to, because it's a big difference between something like 400 grand and 650. We could do a lot more projects if we had another 250 difference to work with.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Myers. We will be looking at all options. I don't like trying to fund things over various years, I'd rather fund the whole project and do the project in that year, because what that ends up doing is cutting, it works in the opposite way, too. Some projects that we wanna do won't have the total funding required, because we've taken a little piece and put somewhere else. So, wherever the priority is, that's what we're going to look at funding, but I'm not going to, that's not gonna be my top priority, to fund projects over multiple years if I can avoid it.
Okay, well, yeah, that's up to council, is it not, Lucy St.
Well, well, it is, but like, that's, these are their recommendations, right? So, like, we're getting the information now, and, and we'll, we'll have further discussion about it, but...
Okay, got it.
Okay, so councillor Hollingsworth.
Thank you. Just two quick comments. I just wanna clarify something. You're saying, Mr. Mayor, that maybe we should not include projects that we're not considering on this list. I personally like, again, the list, and I think that even if there's projects that we know we will not do in our next budget year, I still would like to see on the list, because to me, it's a good inventory list to keep, just keep a track record going, because with changes and so forth, this is going to be now our guidebook, knowing that this is gonna capture, hopefully, all the capital projects. So, I would like to see this list to stay as is and be added to. And you never know, going back to funding, maybe there could be some private funding, so that could be an option as well. I'm sure as people from, the viewers are looking at this list, maybe there's someone out there that might be interested in helping out with the fountain, as an example. So, we should never stop thinking that option could be private funding.
Okay, anybody else? I had a few matters that I was, had some questions about myself. On the, we have one here to buy servers, so, I just had a question about what we're doing as a corporation to be forward-looking technologically, and whether we're looking at data centers, or we're looking at cloud computing, or if we're looking at any of those other options? I think that's Malcolm's department, he doesn't seem to be paying attention.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the question was about servers, and, and I take no issue with the need to buy servers. The question was larger about what are we doing as a corporation to be like forward-looking technologically, and what are we doing to, to look ahead? Are we, are we planning on using cloud computing? Is there any consideration of that? Are we looking at data centers? Is there any consideration of being in a data center? Like, what, are we just gonna, kinda buy the servers and go along as we've always gone?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Our IT, we're still on servers at this point. They have five-to-seven-year life, is probably on the far side of it. Most of our software is starting to move towards cloud-based computing, so as we move our software into that environment, we will be looking at moving also off of the servers. But you still use servers for our mail at this point, et cetera, we haven't moved to software, again, in the Microsoft environment that is cloud-based. So, we're probably several years away from that.
The other thing that I actually think is, is worth some significant discussion, and is, is a priority that we've all talked about time and again, and that we've heard about through the adjustment committee process and all the forums we've participated in, is Queen Street, and, and the Queen Street streetscaping, and I see it's getting close to 17 or 16. But to me, in the last two years, in, in all the meetings we've had at City Hall, and all the people we've talked to about what we need to do to improve the quality of life in our community, in our community, we keep on coming back to this idea that, that the health and vitality of the community is reflected downtown. And, you know, if that's the case, and I, I believe there's a large sentiment to see the aesthetics of our Queen Street improve, I'd like to see more effort be, be put into trying to figure out how to get this item farther up the list. Now, I recognize 3.5 million's a lot, so maybe it's a staged effort, and maybe we look at, you know, what we can do in the short term to improve Queen Street, 'cause a lot of those trees do need to come down. And, you know, I know Public Works doesn't, isn't really crazy about the, what do we call those things, the planter boxes? And, you know, there's, there's, I think, some low-hanging fruit there, some work that could be budgeted for, that could happen next year, that would improve the aesthetic of Queen Street. And it's personally something that I would, I would like to see happen next year, and if it's something that has to happen over a number of years, it could be worked into this capital budget over a number of years. But it'd be my, it'd be my preference to see staff take a, or run, maybe not getting the whole point, 3.5 million up the, the chain, but coming back to us with a plan on how to have some money there for improving the aesthetics of Queen Street, and doing some of the work that you've outlined here on streetscaping and whatnot. So, I, I don't know if anybody shares that opinion, but if, if council by and large shares that opinion, maybe we could send staff back with some of that direction in that regard. I see some nodding hands on the left, I see quite a few on the right. So, I think, I think that's enough direction for you staff, take a look at that item, and see where, how that fits in, and where you could maybe, maybe do some work on that, or budget for some work on that next year. So, I was, you know, I recognize that a lot of these things maybe aren't glitzy, but like, it's, it's evident that a lot of them are necessary, and that we should be doing them, and it's, it's a responsible approach, so those are really the, the two focuses I had. Councillor Shoemaker?
The way the, the sort of discussion's gone, I know I mentioned electronic voting earlier, and I won't, I won't belabor the point, but I, I think, I think, if I'm recalling correctly, I was trying to find the actual resolution, that we were going to look into implementing it as of the beginning of the next term, which is in the next year's budget. I mean, it's not very much money, honestly. So, I'm wondering if there is perhaps some agreement that at the beginning of the next term, we can, you know, for the beginning of the next term, not at the beginning, for the beginning of the next term, we can look to have this implemented.
So, for December, some operation?
Well, for, for, yeah, 14 months from now.
Councillor Hollingsworth, you wanted to speak to that?
No, let me finish off.
Okay, oh, you were putting it, it was different matter.
I, I would support that inclusion, it's, it's $8,100.
Okay.
Do I see, is there anybody who has any, any, any issue with that one moving forward?
We need training on how to do it.
Okay. Councillor Hollingsworth?
Um, this is not on the list, but we did talk about it, and Freddie did mention it. I would really like to see, and I don't know if I do a resolution, to look at putting building permits onto the website. This is a real win-win for the department, City Hall, but most of all, for businesses and for individuals. I would like to see that as one of the priorities for us to discuss as a project.
Okay, so, staff will take that away, and we'll, it's not, it's not on, do you have, go ahead.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. Certainly, that's thing we'll look at, but that's more an operating expense that would be, that would exist for that, in terms of their, it's not capital, per se. The capital that would be associated with that would be the IT infrastructure that would have to be built up to support it. That'd be an operating thing, and we'll certainly look at it in that, in that respect. I also need to echo in terms of the comments earlier on the $8,100 that has been described. We, hearing from council, again, we are going away, and we will come back with options for funding and financing, then that decision would be made on, well, first looked at on October 23rd and ultimately made on December 4th.
One of the things that I would personally like to see on the list at some point, obviously, this isn't gonna be budgeted for 2018, but I'd like to see some numbers, and if this, if staff says this requires a council resolution, we'll, we'll see to one being brought, about the capital costs or the cost in, in moving the Norgoma out of the Marina. That's too bad, councillor Myers, it's a long time that boat has to go. So, I personally believe that boat has to leave the downtown area, I think it, it's, 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 yeah, I'll bring a resolution, but I think staff has to be empowered to look at the cost of that, and we have to consider that at some point.
We can make a divers review.
Well, I think that's fairly dated, on what the cost is.
Five years, nobody's three years.
Okay, okay. Anything else, council? So, we'll come out of the committee of the whole, do we even need a resolution to do that?
I just have the motion that, the report of the Chief Financial Officer and Treasurer regarding the recommendations be received as information.
All in favor? Carried. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Agenda item 7.1.2, 2018 Capital Road Reconstruction Plan, motion by councillors Hoopan and Nero, resolved that the report of the Director of Engineering dated September 11, 2017 concerning the 2018 Capital Works Program be received as information.
Any, anything on that, council? On the road reconstruction plan, councillor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr., through you to the Director of Engineering, Mr. Elliott. Mr. Elliott, the, the report talks about resurfacing and upgrading Bruce Street, and it says, in a similar design as the recently completed Gore Street. Now, I know when Gore Street was redone, it was narrowed, although it was two lanes prior, but it was sort of, everything was sort of wider sidewalks and all there and whatnot now. Is the plan to narrow Bruce Street, or what's, what's the plan there?
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker, there isn't a detailed plan yet, the, the project hasn't been designed yet, it's just a budgetary allowance. Those details will come out during, during the design phase. My hunch is that it won't be narrowed as much, because there's considerable more traffic volumes on Bruce Street as opposed to Gore.
Okay, that's, that's good. I think that was my only question in that report, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Everybody else? See none? Oh, sorry, councillor Fatah, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm, sorry, Mr. Mayor. No, I just maybe, I just wanted maybe a couple of minutes. Don, could you give us some sort of scenario as to the Sackville Road extension, like, just briefly give us, like, what we're looking at right now? I mean, I know we discussed that already, I just wanna get a, get a handle on what we're looking at realistically, in terms of moving forward.
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Fatah, Sackville Road was deferred by, by this council back in the spring, and so the project is essentially put on the shelf. There's no, there's a, there's an EA, environmental assessment shelf life of 10 years, I'd have to check the clock where it is, I think we finished the EA around 2011, 2012, or thereabouts. So, council has another three or four years to approve that project if, if it sees fit. If, we could also include it in the 20, the next five-year capital works plan, you may see a recommendation coming to us, we're monitoring traffic, et cetera. We see it as a need, but council chose otherwise. So, it, it's, it's on the shelf now, but there's, there's nothing lost at this time.
Okay, councillor Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Elliott, on the page on update on 2017 capital program in regards to the connecting link, second line, is that going to be completed this year? It's been quite a while from the first code to the final code being installed.
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Nero, yes, that project will be completed this year.
So, that final code should be underway shortly?
Yes, it should.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Everybody had their say on that one? All in favor? Carried.
Under agenda item 7.8, for boards and committees, a motion by councillors Shoemaker and Turco, resolved that councillor Steve Butland be appointed to the Sault Ste. Marie Innovation Center Board of Directors until December 31, 2018.
All in favor? Carried.
And a motion by councillors Hoopan and Nero, that councillor Ozzy Grandinetti be appointed to the Downtown Business Improvement Area Downtown Association until December 1, 2018.
All in favor? Carried.
And have a notice of motion from the floor by councillors Butland and Christian, whereas the future of the Bay Street Tank Farm site remains undetermined, and whereas discussions with Suncor beginning in 2011 with attached correspondence have proven unsuccessful, and whereas the site would be appropriately designated a brownfield site and likely eligible for loans or grants to remediate the property from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, and whereas Suncor has now expressed a willingness to sell the property for a nominal fee conditional upon the city signing a confidentiality agreement regarding the disclosure of the most recent environment tests and results taken on the property, now they're appropriate resolved that council authorize staff to facilitate the above discussion and action required to proceed. And that's just a notice of motion.
Bylaws, then. Madam Clerk?
Have a motion by councillor Shoemaker and Turco, resolved that all bylaws under item 11 of the agenda under date September 11, 2017 be approved.
All in favor? Carried.
A motion by councillor Shoemaker and Turco, resolved that this council proceed into closed session to discuss a proposed acquisition of property. Further be it resolved that should the said closed session be adjourned, the council may reconvene in closed session to continue to discuss the same matter without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor? Carried.
And a motion by councillors Hoopan and Nero that this council now adjourn. And a motion by Councilors Hoopan and Nero, that this council now adjourn.
All in favor? Carried. Got to get me those tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'm not going to close. Councilor Myers is going to do it.
Thank you. [end of transcript]